Thank you for your patience, everyone. We had a little bit of a feedback situation we needed to fix.
Okay, we are now ready.
Okay, we're good to go. So, welcome to the Lake County Board of Supervisor Regular Meeting. Today is June 8th, 2021. Before we get started, there's a lot of people here in the building, here inside this room, in order to try and accommodate for everyone to have their voice heard. If you're here for a specific item, if you can make room for others so that we can make sure, because we do have the possibility of you joining us in Zoom. We're not trying to ask you to leave. We want to accommodate as many people as possible, but we're also limited in capacity. So if we can help each other out to make sure that those who are here for a specific item have the ability to be in the room to express themselves, that would be awesome. And then if we get more people, we do have a few more chairs that we can accommodate folks with, and so we will try our best to make sure that we can make people comfortable. Let's go ahead and get started. If you can turn on your microphone.
Sorry, our capacity in the audience is 24.
We're probably close to that. And I'm good with what we have. I see people masked, and I see people kind of together in their own units that they came in with already. And I have a feeling that some probably will be leaving soon after public comment. We'll see how that all works out. Let's go ahead and start our agenda. Are there any moments of silence from our Board of Supervisors? I wanted to, oh, did I miss? I wanted to do a moment of silence. We had an unfortunate tragedy over the weekend, which touches all of us as it occurred in our lake. A boat capsized off the area of Clear Lake Oaks. And unfortunately, a couple who had just been engaged, who came here visiting from Fresno, lost their lives. Their names were Webster Medley III and Novia Walton. And both of them unfortunately succumbed to their, to the issues of being in the boat that capsized and drowning. So I want to hold a moment of silence as this is something that affects all of us. Supervisor Crandall, would you please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Yes, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair, there's a lot of people outside wanting to come in and needing to be assured that their voices will be heard when it's time to give public comment on the items of interest to them. But I wondered if you might want to take a moment for staff to turn the video. Sam, is that possible? In the past, when the room was totally locked down, we were able to accommodate people outside off this area so they could be seated out there and watch. Do you want to do that?
How many people here plan to leave after public comment? If you could raise your hands. And so if you plan on being here after public comment, if it's possible to make room for those that do want to leave, because I see that we have SEIU and we have others outside, we would not go over the item that you are here for without you coming back in. And they would leave for public comment, and eventually your item, which I'm guessing from the signs you have on your table, are for the 10:00 AM item. And so we will not pass that 10:00 AM item without your voices being heard. And in fact, in the next 10 minutes, public comment will most likely be over. 15 minutes, depending on how many people choose to stand up. But we have to try and accommodate based on the COVID guidelines we still have. And we want to try our best to make sure all voices are heard. So if it's possible to kind of help accommodate those that just want to be here for the first 9:05 AM item, and then we can swap and bring in the people that are here for the 10:00 AM item as those people who are here for the 9:05 public comment will eventually leave as well from the hands that I just saw. If that's possible.
Thank you, thank you. Good job.
And we're going to, it's not easy when there's limitations. And luckily, we have Zoom, but again, we want to make sure if you're here that you can speak here publicly as well. We're going to make an attempt to move forward. Thank you again Supervisor Crandall for the pledge allegiance. Any extra items not appearing on the posted agenda from any board members? And I haven't heard of anything from staff, and part of staff is outside. And I am going to move forward, and if we need to come back, we'll come back. Let's go ahead and move on to our approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that board members wish to pull? So I'm going to pull item 5.2, and I'm going to pull item 5.9. And I'm also going to pull item 5.16 for further discussions. So 5.2, 5.9, and 5.16. If there's no other items being pulled, let's open it up to the public, both on Zoom and in the room. Are there any items within? Are there any items within the board chambers that public members wish to pull from the consent agenda? And I'm checking in on the Zoom room. Any items that public members wish to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, let's go ahead and bring it back to the Board of Supervisors. Again, 5.2, 5.9, and 5.16 have been pulled. Supervisor Simon.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items 5.1 and 5.3 through 5.8, 5.10 to 5.15, and then 5.17.
And if I may ask respectfully if we can bring the microphone a little closer to make sure that everybody can hear.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items 5.1, 5.3 through 5.8, 5.10 through 5.16, or 5.15, and then also 5.17, all for approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second from Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Swatke?
Aye. And obviously, with the number of people that we have here, we're going to move on and get to those items later. Let's go ahead and open up our 9:05 AM public input item. This is where you get three minutes to express yourself on anything that is not on our agenda today. Let's go ahead and start in the boardroom. Again, you have three minutes. Each, not total. And because we have so many people here in the room, CAO Hutchinson, would you be able to keep track of time? I know you have been in the past. I just want to make sure. Perfect, thank you.
My name is Cynthia Field. I was an IHSS caregiver for 10 months. I've been on the contract negotiation team for the past year. Historically, caregiving has been seriously underpaid as a labor, as a source of labor, if paid at all. 99% of unpaid work in the world is done by women, so please factor that in. Also factor in that among IHSS caregivers across the nation, a large percentage of those are people of color. Right now, we are in a historical vortex where we are examining what defines discrimination and what defines essential work. And I believe the contract negotiations at this time fall under this category of concern. We have been trying to negotiate a contract that includes a supplemental wage of $1 over minimum wage for the past four years. The caregivers and the recipients of IHSS are your family, your neighbors, and your friends. We care about you. We care about our recipients. And we want a better life for ourselves and for our recipients. We want every recipient to have a provider. Right now, they don't. It's been proven in Mendocino. When they received a supplemental wage contract above minimum wage, there were more providers to fulfill the need for recipients. Across the state of California, 45 out of 58 counties have supplement wages in their union contracts. Please consider us. Make Lake County a better place to live and a better place to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the boardroom? Please state your name, and again, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Latisha, and of course, I'm here with SEIU to represent the home care workers here in the county. I was a caregiver for 12 years myself, and I currently work with the local. But in most counties that I have gone to, most counties around here value the work that caregivers do. It's not an easy job. I mean, we have people that are changing catheters, doing cleaning IVs, changing diapers, doing all kinds of things to take care of people so they can be with dignity in their own homes. But yet, at McDonald's, they're offering $15 as a starting pay an hour. It doesn't make sense. The work that these caregivers do in this county needs to be valued. It's making an investment into this county as well. If you give caregivers a raise, they're going to spend their money in this county. It's an investment into your counties, an investment into your providers, into the community and the work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. One at a time.
Hi, my name is Suzette Huben Miller. I am recently, as of May 19th of 2019, got back into the workforce, work field. And I'm grateful, and I believe that we are overworked and underpaid. And I believe that our clients need, you know, there's a screaming for us good providers. And we want good pay, good benefits, good incentives, you know, to give good quality work for the clients. And I'd just like for you to keep this in mind. I'm coming from being homeless to being working in the work field. I am now stable in the home, and this is my hope that to have, you know, just downright good work in the work field. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning. My name is Seva Jamali, and I've been at this podium before, but I have something different to say this time. I'm an IHSS provider, and I've been working here for 30 years in this county. We are now at $14 an hour. That is pathetic that it's taken us 30 years to be able to even make $14 an hour. As everybody's already pointed out, we make more money, we spend more money. And most of us can't afford to go out of the county or don't have a way to go out of the county to do your shopping, so we do it here. So when you give us a raise above a minimum wage, you're giving an investment into your county. One thing I don't know if you're aware of, but essential worker, what does that mean? That means when we were in, having to stay in shelters and we were being evacuated, and we had all these disasters for the last several years in Lake County, well, guess what? We left our families, and we went and took care of our providers, I mean, our recipients, and made sure they were there where they were going to be safe. We made sure that they were fed, that they had, that they got to a shelter if they needed to. Whatever it is that needed for those recipients during those disasters, we made sure we took care of it. And then we'd go back and take care of our families. So all I'm asking of you is to consider real strongly, as we're in negotiations with you, about these facts. We're there when there's a disaster. We're there to make sure our recipients are safe. When you guys can't do it, you guys are busy taking care of the disaster. Social services, adult protective services, they're all busy taking care of the immediate problem in emergencies. We're taking care of those that are vulnerable in their homes that we've been taking care of, and yes, they die on us. And believe me, we grieve. We grieve just like they were our mom or dad or whatever, some relative, because we tell them that close to them. When I've worked for one man for five years, he's like my family. If something was to happen to him, I would be there. I would be crying, and I would be missing. So just remember that when you come to the table to agree on a contract. Pay us for what we're worth, for once. That's all I'm asking. Instead, the Board of Supervisors in this county, and now that we have a fresh board, consider giving us what we're worth. Not what you think we deserve, but what we're worth. Make us feel. You know how it makes me feel when I go by the signs at McDonald's and they start their workers out at $15 an hour? Really? I'm going in and taking care of people and making sure they're eating, and they're getting food, and they're getting, their houses are clean, and I can't even get above minimum wage. That's wrong. We should be ashamed of ourselves that we've let it go this long. 30 years is ridiculous for us to finally get a wage that we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other member of the public wish to speak?
Good morning. I'm Sharia Utterback. I am an IHSS worker. I've been working for four years. And I feel unappreciated, like all these people here supporting Lake County too. They trust us. If they die, we're the first responders. We hold that against us. So why is McDonald's getting paid more than us? We're like family. Think of your mom, your grandma. I was 15 when I started caregiving for my grandma. And now I'm 28, fighting to keep a house and everything. Fighting for people like her, for your grandma, your mom, your uncle. So please respect us and please help us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any further comments from the public in the board chamber? Okay, we do have a comment in Zoom. Let's go ahead and open up Vivian Denniston.
Greetings, Supervisors. Hello, my name is Vivian Denniston, and I am the Regional Vice President for SEIU 2015 in Northern California. Investing in home care is a win-win. As you heard Seva say earlier, this money earned in Lake County, it stays in Lake County. It is a win-win. And I would say that the workers at McDonald's that are preparing your lunches, you know, that is important to be a worker at McDonald's. But you know what's more important? That your elderly and disabled members of your community are safe in their homes and being cared for and getting a meal cooked for them every day. That's important. And there is such a shortage of IHSS workers. And statistics show that the group over 60 is growing by thousands every day. But unfortunately, IHSS workers, that number is not growing every day. There is already a shortage that will continue. If they are not respected and paid the wages they deserve, this is going to continue. People are going to go to work for McDonald's, even though they don't want to. They want to take care of people because it is a feel-good job, to be honest with you. I've been doing it for 18 years. So I would ask that you respect my brothers and sisters in Lake County and give them the raise that they so deserve. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I don't see any more hands in the Zoom room. I'm going to ask again here in this room, any further public comments? Because what I'm going to do, if there's no further comments, I'm going to ask for those that are no longer here for other items on the agenda to make space for those that are outside in the entryway. That way, if they have a public comment, we get to them as well. We don't want to not hear people's voices. Thank you very much. So let's go ahead and take a two-minute break, and then we'll restart. All right. Ms. Purdy, thank you very much for helping us with the larger crowd than usual. And thank you, everybody in the room, for your patience. I want to reopen public comment. I know we asked outside, but I just want to make sure public comment is for any public expression for items that are not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the room that wishes to provide a public comment? Okay, and then I was told that there was another hand in the Zoom room for public comment. If I missed it, I know I received that from Matthew Rothstein and wondering if that person is still looking to speak. I want to make sure we don't miss it. So I see there's Erin. If we can go ahead and unmute Erin, and Erin, if you can provide us your full name. And we are not hearing Erin right now. Jake, would you be able to work with Erin and see if we can fix that audio issue? And what I think I'm going to do is we're going to move forward, but we will go ahead and come back to public comment as we did see the hand up, but we just want to go ahead and try to move on as efficiently as possible. Is that possible, Jake? Looks like we've muted the Zoom room. Sam? Because I can't hear Jake either. Jake, let's try it again.
This is Jake, checking, one, two.
Perfect. Erin, let's try it again.
Okay.
We can hear you.
Did that go through?
We can hear you. If you can give us your full name, you have three minutes.
Okay, it's just a quick comment. This is Erin McCarrick from Clear Lake. Just requesting that the Community Development Department process early activations for major use permits for, sorry, for cannabis properties that are compliant as discussed by the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission. That's it.
Thank you very much for your comment. Okay, and I believe that was the last hand in the Zoom room. And we have no further public comment in the audience here in the chamber. So we're going to move on to item 6.2 or 9:06 AM item, consideration of update on COVID-19. And I see that we have Dr. Bloom with us in the Zoom room. Dr. Bloom, the floor is yours. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you, Chair Sabatier, and good morning, Board. I wanted to very briefly discuss the COVID response within Lake County. And along the same lines as previous, I wanted to discuss our cases, our tiers, and our vaccination situation. And then shifted over to Sarah, our epidemiologist, to discuss the numbers in detail. And the short of it is that things remain the same. From last week and the week before, case rates are low. Our case rate is about 3.3 per 100,000, and our testing positivity is 2.5%. This is, again, delayed data, so I don't have the data for the past few days, as is usual for our presentations. And I only make a mention of that because there have been some upticks in cases around Northern California and a few of the various counties. And we are seeing some indications of possible mild upticks within Lake County. However, that remains to be seen with our numbers. So what I would like to report is that things are remaining the same as far as we can tell at this time. Unfortunately, the things that are remaining the same are also our vaccination coverage rates. We have just less than 1,000 vaccinations administered over the past two weeks. And so we will be discussing that later in the presentation regarding our approach to try to increase those rates. At this point, I would like to send it over to Sarah so that we can discuss our numbers in detail. Sarah?
Thank you, Dr. Bloom. Good morning, everyone. A quick update on the status of COVID in Lake County. First, we'll look statewide. Testing is declining statewide. But fortunately, the test positivity rate remains low at 0.8%. The daily case rate statewide remains low at two cases per 100,000. Later today, the state will announce the tier metrics for the next week. Lake County will remain in the orange tier, which indicates moderate transmission based on metrics from May 23rd to the 29th. Dr. Bloom already shared a daily case rate of 3.3 per 100,000. That's 15 cases identified in that week and a testing positivity of 2.5%. The map here shows you that 35 of California's 58 counties are also in the orange or moderate tier, and 19 counties are in the yellow tier. Next week at this time, the state will be running the blueprint officially for the last time. So it will, we will have metrics like this to share with you, but they won't have any impact because the state is sunsetting the blueprint on June 15th. So just to repeat that, we'll have the metrics, but the blueprint and the rules governing what can be open and what can't, and where there's modifications, will sunset June 15th, as I think you're all well aware of. What I just want to point out here, this is the EPI curve. So this shows us the number of new cases identified by week in Lake County among Lake County residents. And so Lake County has been really stable since mid-April, ranging from 12 to 24 cases identified over the last, really over the last two months or so. And for the week of May 30th, the week that just finished, we've identified eight cases as of Sunday when I ran these data. So again, looking like this past week will remain stable. Testing is declining slightly in Lake County. It's also declining statewide and in many other counties. But compared to a lot of other rural counties, Lake County is doing a good job of testing, keeping the testing rate up. Like Dr. Bloom said, we've been stable in cases, and progress towards vaccine coverage has really slowed. So over the last two weeks, about 950 people were newly vaccinated. Statewide, the week of Memorial Day, we really did see a slowing of the number of new people getting vaccinated. But really, we're looking at about maybe a 1% increase each week. So I think that's important to think about with the goal of herd immunity around 70% or so. So as of Monday, nearly 30,000 people in Lake County were at least partially vaccinated, and nearly 25,000 are fully vaccinated. So that's 53% of Lake County residents, 12 years of age and older are partially or fully vaccinated compared to 66% of Californians. And I'm going to move through the next couple of slides quickly because really, nothing has changed in the last couple of weeks. The ZIP codes on the left, 95422, 95423, and these four other ZIP codes, about 41% of people 12 years of age and older are partially or fully vaccinated, and about 52% of people living in these other six ZIP codes, such as 95426, 95451, and the other four ZIP codes listed. About 45% of Latino residents are partially or fully vaccinated. About 46% of white, non-Hispanic residents are partially or fully vaccinated. These data here still do not include data or vaccines administered by Indian Health Service, so it's an so it's an underestimate. According to these data, about 36% of American Indian or Alaskan natives are partially or fully vaccinated. But we know, in reality, it's higher due to the work of your tribal health partners. By age, there's been, as I'm sure you're all familiar, and we've spoken about previously, 12- to 17-year-olds are now eligible, and 8% of Lake County people 12 to 17 are partially or fully vaccinated. 37% of people 18 to 49, that's about 22,000 people in total, so 37% of 22,000 people. Slight increases among 50- to 64-year-olds. Now, two out of three 50- to 64-year-olds partially are fully vaccinated, and 61% of people over the age of 65. And just one last slide to show you how that's really stalled among people 65 and older. This is looking at least partially vaccinated over time, and you can see this line flattening here in pink. You can see the increase starting in young people as they become eligible, and sort of steady but slow progress among people 18 to 49. So I'll close with that and just say that we'll continue to watch the data. Cases look stable. Vaccine progress is slowing, and the disparity between Lake County and the state coverage level is growing because while it's slowed statewide, the state is vaccinating at a slightly higher pace than Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. So again, to reiterate, the cases are looking about the same as they have been. And the tiers are going away on the 15th. And so I did want to stress that although the restrictions for businesses are going away, and that we are all happy that they're going away, the virus is not going away. The virus is still here, which is why vaccination is important. The virus comes in waves. We all know that. The virus differs in times of the year. It differs in different seasons, which is why vaccination is still important and why we are concerned that the vaccination rate and coverage is slowing, particularly in the 65-plus age range and in the 18 to 49 age range. So vaccination is still important because we have not reached a level where we would feel that we could avoid a significant surge based on vaccine coverage of the county. That being said, when the tiers go away on June 15th, please remember that you have to take caution and that reasonable protection is important. And that if you feel that wearing a mask is important, go ahead and wear a mask. And that if you are in locations with lots of people, remember that you should be socially distancing if you cannot, excuse me, if you are in an area where there are many people around you, because you will be at a higher risk of contracting COVID since you don't know the vaccination status of large groups. We have had some large events recently, which unfortunately, at some of them, we have noted that masking and distancing did not take place. And we have not seen the results from this yet regarding cases. However, we are starting to see a few cases that we identified where in people at those larger events where masking and distancing did not take place. And so this is particularly what we at the Department of Health are concerned about in the coming months, particularly in Lake County with July 4th. So we want to celebrate July 4th, and we are very happy that our case rates are low. But please make sure to do so in a responsible fashion. Don't celebrate inside with a ton of people unmasked. Be careful. It's for your own good. It's for your own safety, and it's for the safety of your family. So I'm not going to harp on this anymore. And we're very happy that the restrictions are going away. But again, the virus is still with us, unfortunately. And so use your common sense for you and for those around you. As far as vaccination, we have all of the different types of vaccine within the county. We have Moderna and Pfizer and Johnson &amp; Johnson. And you can still go to MyTurn and schedule. You can walk into a number of the different vaccine sites, whether that be in Lower Lake, whether that be in Lakeport, whether that be at Walmart, or the pharmacies, or Safeway. And then we are going to have a few more sites opening up as well, which will be accepting appointments through MyTurn or Walk-ins, which I'll get to in a moment. So plenty of places to get vaccinated. And so I highly suggest that if you haven't been vaccinated or if you're partially vaccinated, that you should do that. In addition, I did want to mention the incentives with the state of California. If you become vaccinated before June 15th, you will be entered into a large lottery for a significant sum of money as an incentive and as a thank you for getting vaccinated. And then also, individuals who are not yet vaccinated are actually eligible for a $50 incentive from the state when you become fully vaccinated. So if you have not been vaccinated, that is a little bonus that will say, okay, well, if you're thinking about getting vaccinated, which you should be, that this is a nice little thank you to say thank you for protecting yourself and protecting those in Lake County to get vaccinated. So you will automatically be eligible for that. And then when you receive your vaccinations, you will receive the gift card of $50 to be used in many different outlets across the county. And if you want to find further details about that, you can go to the state website, CDPH website, as well as if you type into Google, "California Vax for the Win", you should be able to find it as well. As far as strategies at this point to increase our vaccine coverage and our vaccination coverage across the county, I did want to mention that the Department of Public Health is working on a number of different fronts to try to increase the vaccination coverage, again incrementally, within the county. So the Department of Public Health has been working closely with our schools and school boards, and we have received funding from the state, as well as has the school board, to assist with vaccine and vaccination coverage. And we will be starting with clinics at the schools for children and for families of children. Hopefully, in the next week, we will begin this on a rotating basis across schools, across the county. But the plan is to start this coming week. As well as this, the Department of Public Health is working with the Department of Behavioral Health of Lake County to provide vaccination services for those who want them, who are clients of behavioral health. And these are anticipated to be offered at behavioral health different locations and clinics. And so you should talk to your behavioral health provider if you are interested in a vaccination. As well as that, we are working with other partners across the county, smaller groups, to provide vaccinations, as well as primary care physician offices. We have been in discussion with our local Center for Medicare and Medicaid providers to support our primary care physician offices to deliver vaccinations, as well as are currently in discussions with our health systems to further support the primary care physicians' offices and clinics throughout the county to provide vaccinations for all of their clients. As well as this, the Department of Public Health will also be opening clinics at the Department of Public Health to provide vaccination services for members of the county. As I mentioned before, these are new clinics that will be opening. I can't quite yet tell you the hours. However, there will be a robust amount of hours and dates available for any of the different types of vaccines that we discussed, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Moderna, or Pfizer. And those clinics hopefully will be starting this coming week. So look for more information for that. You can find the information on our website. But also, you can go on to MyTurn this coming week and book an appointment because appointments will be bookable on MyTurn for the Department of Public Health clinic, which will be at the Department of Public Health. And you can also walk in if you don't want to make an appointment, as Walk-ins will be available. Lastly, I wanted to mention something that I discussed at previous meetings, which are mobile teams. So the state has provided access to mobile vaccination teams, and we have applied to have mobile vaccination teams come to the county, pending approval. And so the plan is for these mobile vaccination teams to come to the county and specifically to help with vaccinations in that HPI-1 group that Sarah just discussed in those various ZIP codes. And we can discuss further in the future the progress of this. But I did want to mention that this is going on. As I know, in previous Board of Supervisors meetings, there have been some questions about mobile services or trucks going around to vaccinate folks who would like vaccination. And so this is in process currently. Lastly, I did want to mention, because Supervisor Pyska asked two weeks ago regarding senior centers. And so I wanted to mention that there have been outreach to senior centers and meetings with the senior centers within the county. And after long discussions, the senior centers at this time have expressed that they are not comfortable opening currently for full in-building services and in-building congregate meals. And therefore, we will be having ongoing discussions throughout the next number of months on a monthly basis to discuss opening times and to discuss any concerns in an effort to become fully open and to start having our normal services at our county's senior centers as they are quite important to our senior population. That is the update for Lake County. So in summary, the cases are flat at this point, although we are a little bit trepidatious that there may be some increased case rates based on the county rates around Lake County, as well as the fact that the tiers are going away on June 15th. And therefore, again, just to stress it, please use your common sense when you are out celebrating July 4th. Have fun. Celebrate July 4th, but do it in a responsible fashion for your protection and your family's protection, please. Because we do not want to see a surge of cases in the county that can lead to significant hospitalizations and significant illness for the residents of Lake County. We have been doing such a good job. So keep it up and be careful and be reasonable. Please, if you have not gotten vaccinated, get vaccinated. Consider getting vaccinated. Talk to your primary healthcare provider. Look on the web regarding vaccinations from trusted sources, the CDC, California Department of Public Health, as there are many places to get vaccinated, as I just mentioned, as well as the Department of Public Health. Again, we'll be opening our clinics as well this coming week, which will be available on MyTurn or for Walk-ins. And with that, I thank all of the partners that the Public Health has been working with to try to increase our vaccination rates for the county. And I wish everybody in Lake County good health. And please be careful out there and be safe and be well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bloom, and thank you, Sarah. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Pyska?
I think we can all appreciate the welcome news that we're going to have changes coming to the county next week and throughout the state. But it's also important to be considerate of others' choices. We don't know what people are, other people and their families, if they're not vaccinated, if they have illnesses. So I think this is going to be a time when we just really need to be considerate in general of each other and our choices. So I appreciate you, Dr. Bloom, following up about the senior centers. And it's certainly understandable that they're remaining cautious at this time. I'm wondering how the conversation's going as we prepare for fire season and if those senior centers are going to be able to be a resource for seniors if there's an evacuation or if there's a fire. Have those discussions begun?
So the answer to that is twofold. Number one, the discussions have mainly been surrounding just reopening in general in the setting of COVID, and they have not necessarily focused on fire season and the centers being a resource during fire season. However, there have been some email discussions regarding that. So the discussions have begun, but they have not taken place in any robust fashion to this point. But you do make a very good point. And senior centers should, as they are very important centers for the community, be an important resource during fire season. Secondly, the discussions, again, about reopening will be happening throughout the summer months. Right now, on a monthly basis, they may be occurring more frequently than that. And I'm sure that those discussions will be upcoming further during fire season.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. I see we have one already in the Zoom room, phone 4627. If we can unmute them, and then please provide us with your first and last name.
Well, I got a voice saying I'm unmuted. Can you hear me there? Because I don't hear anything on the phone here.
We can hear you now. If you can please provide your first and last name, you have three minutes.
Oh, okay, thank you, and thank you, Dr. Bloom. My name is Tom Slate, and I have a question for Dr. Bloom about adverse reactions. And as far as I know, the manufacturers of these vaccines are not held accountable and apparently can't be held accountable. So my concern is if, Dr. Bloom, if people were to follow your lead, as I understand it, and get vaccinated, and then have an adverse reaction, are you agreeable to taking full responsibility?
I'm sorry. So am I, as the public health officer of the county, taking full responsibility for an adverse reaction to a vaccination? I believe that that was the question, so I'm sorry if I misunderstood that. But that is what the question seemed like. I am the public health officer for the county, so I am not in a position to take any sort of responsibility for an adverse reaction from a medicine that is administered. So that being said, vaccines are administered throughout life, throughout the world, and as are many other medicines, which all have potential adverse reactions, which are well-publicized, as are potential allergic reactions or other adverse reactions to these vaccines, as with any vaccine, as with any medication, such as penicillin, such as Advil, such as Tylenol. And so as I would not personally be taking responsibility for any adverse or allergic reaction to Tylenol, it is the same with any other medication that would be administered. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much for the response. Any other public comment? Let's start in the Zoom room first before we move on to the chamber. And we have Will Tuttle. If we can please unmute, and you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you very much. And I'd like to respond to some of the, what was said just now about the rollout of the COVID vaccines. And one of the things that I learned recently is that already over $3 billion has been of our taxpayer money is being used to promote everyone getting vaccinated by the U.S. government. And so that money is an enormous sum of money. That's $3.2 billion. That's $3,000 million to try to get people to take a vaccine. And in many ways, I think it's important, as we see in the graphs that we saw, that people are resisting this. And I think I'm speaking for thousands of people here in Lake County who do not want to be vaccinated, and I think who are outraged that so much attention and money is being diverted into trying to get people to take a vaccine that has never been tested on human being. This is really a big test that's coming out. It's never, it really wasn't even properly tested on animals. It's been tested on the last 20 or 30 years, these mRNA vaccines, and then all in the animals. So now it's just directly to human beings. And we have people who are, out of research, Robert F. Kennedy Jr., for example, has been studying this for many publicly and started the Children's Health Defense. His most recent statement is, quote, "The new COVID vaccine should vote at all costs." That's what he's saying, based on his research. We have Dr. Peter McCullough, and I sent you all and on the board a video link to his statements. He's an extremely highly respected M.D., a professor of one of the most respected universities of medicine, and he has come out and saying this, from the very beginning, this has been all about the vaccine. There's never been a more dangerous vaccine ever. I mean, it's in just the first few months of the release of this vaccine, more people have been killed or injured than in 30 years of vaccines already. I mean, this is off the charts. And so with all due respect, when we hear statements that the public is being informed, I think we are not being informed, we're being misinformed. And this is a direct violation of the Nuremberg Principles, all 10 of them, which require informed consent. We're not getting informed consent. And I think the board is obligated to give the other side on this, to do the research and to protect the people in our county, because we're not hearing the truth. We heard last, two weeks ago, that the spike protein just sort of disappears, that the mRNA creates a spike protein. Just now, recently, Dr. Byram Rydal from Canada, one of the top vaccinologists and virologists, came out and said, basically, we made a mistake. He said that the spike proteins are very harmful, they collect in the spleen, they move from the spleen into other organs like the bone marrow and the heart and the lungs and the brain, and they cause blood clotting. We find teenagers dying of blood clots right after being vaccinated. We find certain-
Your three minutes are up. If you can get to your final point, please.
Okay, thank you very much. So I want to just encourage the board, please, to continue to present reasonable scientific validation for what I've been saying. These are facts.
Thank you. Phone 6478, I believe that was the same one, so let's put you on hold for a second. Let's open it up to the boardroom to see if there's any new public members that wish to make a comment. Anyone from the boardroom wish to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, let's go ahead and go back. Phone 6478, I wish I had a name for you. I forgot your name. If you are the same person that already made a comment, if you can provide a succinct comment, since you've already had your three minutes, that would be appreciated. We have a large group here waiting for us to get to their item.
Hello? Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, no, it's a different voice. Sorry, but you have three minutes.
All right. My, my name is Madeline, and I like to urge you to use some of that big sum of money to educate people to have alternatives to the vaccine. So if they don't wish to take the vaccine, they can take all these other things like vitamin D, C, zinc, and boost immune system, and also educate about better lifestyle, getting into the sunshine and exercise and all that. It's very well needed, especially in the American culture. So please do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And there is no more public comment in the Zoom room. And again, checking the boardroom, I see no one moving to come and make a comment. And coming back to the Board of Supervisors, any final questions or concerns or comments?
I just want to say I appreciate that last comment by Madeline, offering another solution as opposed to not taking or taking the vaccination. You know, that's, that's pretty, I think it's pretty cool.
Living a healthy style is always a positive note, but at the same time, I will suggest that we tried an alternative before the vaccine came out, and it wasn't working out too well for the entire world, let alone the United States. And I think that it's a difficult task to be cautious when the virus doesn't really care. And it crosses all lines and barriers that we unfortunately create socially. And I do see a hand has come back up. I don't want to ignore anybody. 6205, if it's a repeat, please be succinct.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Thank, this is Bart Levinson. I wanted to add to the comments by Supervisor Pyska to Dr. Bloom concerning the senior centers and addressing preparedness for the fire season for the seniors and the issue in general of what use the senior centers are going to be able to be going forward, given that they've been closed during the pandemic. The Lakeport Senior Center announced recently on KPFC Radio that they would be closed for an additional year. It seems that each center is operated differently and plans to have different criteria for who will be allowed in, including not just the seniors, but the volunteers. This is a matter of, I think, much more immediate concern than Dr. Bloom may realize to prepare for the fire season. For, in the past, senior centers have been used as local assistance centers, evacuation centers, and are generally places that seniors are used to knowing that they can go to. This whole past year, they've been told they cannot. So I would ask Dr. Bloom and the supervisors to more urgently look into what is happening at the senior centers. How are they being utilized? Are they open to the, to the senior public? And I think you'll find that in many ways, they are not.
Thank you very much for your comment. All right, we're going to go ahead and close this item. Dr. Bloom, Sarah, thank you very much for your time today and your presentation.
Supervisor Smathi? I just want to highlight, I'm not discouraging the vaccine. What I was saying is if there's people that are choosing not to take it, at least do something to enhance your, your system. You know what I mean? That's all. I appreciate another option is what I was trying to insinuate.
Thank you for the clarification. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I just want to comment on the senior center. You know, each one of us have a senior center in our district, and what I do want to say is, you know, it is a challenging time, obviously, for everyone as we move into the 15th, as we move forward. But I know that the senior centers in my district and most likely all around the lake have done a great job with the, the drive-through food, communicating with the seniors, you know, for vaccinations and other things. So I know it's a challenge as we move forward, but they each will make their decisions as they feel safely, and I think we should respect those as much as anything else. I know that as a county and as a board, we have our folks that are working on and being prepared for fire season, where the evacuation shelters are, where the immediate places that need, for folks need to go. So just want to make sure that our senior centers in this comment are appreciated, and I know it's challenging for everybody. So they've done some great work, and they continue to do that to support our seniors. So just wanted to say that also.
Yep, thank you for the comments. And that looks like that concludes our item today on COVID-19. Again, Dr. Bloom and Sarah, thank you very much for your time today. We're going to move on to item 6.3, or 9:30 a.m. item. Consideration to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to the Lake County Code, Section 2-38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services. And B, consideration of agreement for consulting services for Lake County Community Development for the amount of $100,000. And C, consideration to appoint the county administrative officer or her designee as interim community development director. CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, Supervisor Simon and Supervisor Pyska are presenting this item today.
So first of all, I want to thank the board and Chair Sabatier for appointing myself and Jessica to this committee. We understand how important, you know, the Committee for Community Development is as we move forward. We understand the importance, as long and as quickly as possible, following our decision to restore it as a standalone department, that we need to really get to work, and we need to help, you know, drive the path forward on how we're going to do this. Also want to say that we appreciate all the hard work and dedication from everyone in the community, the CDD Department. It is a challenge, since I've been on the board. It's one of the busiest departments and one of the most important for economic development. And we understand the challenges they're constantly going through. And also understand how stressful it is as we move through this time for the director and staff. You know, we saw it as a priority, we made a decision, but it did not happen immediately. We're currently going through that process. So just want to thank each and every one of them, from the director down, of working with us as we work through these changing environments, as we bring these proposals to the board to hopefully move forward. Our priority has to been to secure an interim coverage for the department while the recruitment for the next CDD director is underway, and we immediately went to work with meetings and opportunities to discuss how we do that to bring it back to the board. And given the urgency of the situation, we determined contacting prospective firms directly, rather than taking several months to issue a request for proposals and seek out bids, would be the proper process to bring it back to the board for that discussion. And fortunately, there were about four groups out there that were contacted by our CAO and other staff as we moved through this process. And it seems to be an extremely busy time all over, all over the United States, the country, and here in the state, and a challenge for finding companies that are willing to step in and fill these gaps. Two of the firms contacted indicated they had the capacity to do this, and assisted us with the, and will help assist us with the interim coverage in the CDD Department. We reviewed their proposals, and they interviewed both to determine what would be the best fit. And ultimately, today, we come with a recommendation for an agreement with management partners. Management Partners is a unique organization that was founded in 1994. Management Partners is comprised of leaders and managers in all government operations, including about, including about two dozen that have led county departments. And they really seemed to fit on where we were going for an interim opportunity to kind of stabilize the department while we're looking for the community development director to help us move forward. And we all understand, today, we're going to be dealing with, you know, some other conversations that we have later on the agenda, land use planning, you know, long-term vision, and a lot of the other things and priorities we'll talk about today. We do have, you know, some folks from Management Partners here today that we'll talk later. But I just want to say that we understand, again, how important this is. As a newly elected supervisor for my second term, I guess I'm no longer newly, but going in five years, community development has been a big part of that since my time on the board. After the Valley Fire recovery and everything, there have been challenges, but we've worked through those with the community development department, and we just look to, you know, a better future and a brighter future as we're taking care of the constituents in Lake County. So hopefully, the discussion today will help lead to that, and we'll continue working on it. And I want to thank Carol and our entire crew for this committee, Jessica, and everyone else that's been in the conversation, Scott DeLeon, and the other folks who have helped us get to this point. And hopefully, the board will understand why we've made this recommendation and help us take the steps forward that are needed.
So over the past few months, we've been working really hard to stabilize our community development department and build the foundation so that we can thrive. I want to thank all of our staff who have been dedicated over, you know, we're working in a very difficult environment, and we're bringing these resources in to support, to support our department and set it up for success. So with the board's approval today, with this agreement with Management Partners, we'll assign David Bosch to serve as our special advisor to community development. David Bosch comes to us with extraordinary experience in county and city planning administration. Management Partners' proposal has the ability of their team to provide other supportive services as our needs progress. And that's really one of the reasons we chose them, because we, you know, as Mr. Bosch comes in and assesses our needs, if we have more staff requirements, he can bring those in, he has those abilities with analysts and, and other resources. Management Partners' services will include planning commission meetings, management advice on CDD projects, coaching and mentoring staff, and analytical assistance. Work will begin June 14th, which we're pretty excited, that's next week, and continue through the end of October, October 31st. We're currently recruiting for a new CDD director, and we hope to have that director on board in October, and with Management Partners assisting during that transition. So as a contractor, Management Partners will, will be, will not be staff. And so we'll need county staff to make personnel decisions, execute agreements, sign financial documents, and exercise budget authority. Our committee recommends that we appoint CAO or her designee as interim CDD director to make those decisions that we can't have a contractor make until we have a new director hired. And during this time, CEO, CAO will execute the contracts, approve the financial documents, sign off as, with department head matters requiring CDD director approval, and oversee personnel matters. Assistant CAO Susan Parker will touch base with CDD staff on a daily basis when our special advisor Bosch is not available on site. He'll be available, not on site, some days. So today, we request that we waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 2-38 dot one, or dot two, as it is not in the public interest to the unique natures of goods and services. Approve the contract for consulting services for Lake County Community Development, appoint county administration, administrative officer or her designee as interim community development director. And the committee is committed to working on this through, with Mr. Bosch and with CDD through the transition until we have our new director in place. Recruitment efforts are underway. We have, August 3rd is the date set aside for our interviews, so we hope to be moving through this process quickly. And at this point, I will turn it over to our CAO and introduce Management Partners and the representatives that have joined us today.
Thank you, Supervisor Pyska. So we have present with us today Vice President Jan Perkins, and then we also have our special advisor-to-be, David Bosch. So Jan, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank, thank you so much, Carol, and thank you, members of the Board of Supervisors. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning. I think the qualifications of our firm have been covered very well, but I would just like to say that, that we as a firm take very seriously our commitment to the local governments that we serve to work collaboratively with, with all of the people within those local governments to help you solve the problems that you have, to create great recommendations that are practical, that you can implement, and to work collaboratively with you. That is the way that we always work, and that we will certainly be working with you in Lake County. We have, we've served actually the majority of counties within California and a majority of the cities as well, and we are a national firm, and we are comprised of people from all of the disciplines within local government. So we understand what it means to be doing the, the real work on the ground and the work of the community development department. In a moment, I'll have David introduce himself to the entire board. But we have proposed, as was noted, a team, certainly led by David. We have a couple of other people that are, that are in our proposal that can provide assistance as, as needed, and we have the full backing of our, our whole firm and everybody in the firm who can jump in as needed to help Carol and the county as projects arise. But I wanted just to point out a couple of people. Christine Butterfield, who we've noted in our proposal, also has a very good community development background. She's an expert facilitator as well. community development background. She's an expert facilitator as well, and as, works on a lot of process improvements with our firm. And then the other person that we noted in our proposal is Michelle New, who's a senior management analyst, who does a tremendous number of various analytical projects, and who has a strong HR background as well. And we think that they might be strong members of, of a support network for David in this, in this engagement. So with that, I'd like to ask David to introduce himself to the full board.
Good morning, everyone. Nice to see you all on Zoom. I'm David Bosch. I joined Management Partners approximately three years ago as a special advisor. And I'll talk a little bit about some of the projects I've undertaken with Management Partners in a moment. But prior to that, I served in local government for 40 years, 20 of which were at the executive management level, as a city manager, as an assistant county manager, as a county manager, as a county executive officer. And the other half of my career, the other 20 years, was spent in community development and planning work. So I think that as we talked with Carol and, and the two board members who initiated this discussion, it became clear that we had the right combination of staff who were available for this assignment. When I joined Management Partners after retiring from Placer County as the chief executive officer, I immediately took a position as the interim city manager for Half Moon Bay, California. And that job was, required me to be physically in Half Moon Bay roughly half to two-thirds of the time, and the rest of the time to be available on an as-needed basis. But that was a more of a traditional interim appointment. Well, I actually had full authority of the city manager within the constraints of the CalPERS system. And after concluding that engagement, which went about nine months, I did a little bit of project work, only to next take on an assignment as the interim general manager for a water district in Pacifica. And so I, once again, was a full-time employee at that organization for about eight months as I assisted them in evaluating various aspects of their operations, but then also positioned them to hire their permanent general manager. Since concluding that, I've primarily been working for the cities of Tracy and Santa Rosa. In the Tracy assignment, I facilitated their budget development process as an outside management services consultant, and then did some follow-on work in terms of their community development, what they call their development services department. We have recently been doing work in Santa Rosa, and that work actually continues a little bit today as we have formulated recommendations in terms of their implementation. They've had some transitional issues. The city manager just recently tendered his resignation, so we've had to kind of adapt our, our project around that. But we have provided their community development department, public works, transportation, water departments, all kind of evaluations and then recommendations in terms of ways to perhaps organize differently in order to be more efficient, more effective ultimately. So I'll, I'll stop there without going on any further and I guess turn it back either to Jan or the county administrative officer, Carol.
So Mr. Chair, I think that completes our presentation of the item unless Supervisor Pyska or Simon have anything else to add.
I'll let this start.
All right. Is there any way, Sam, can we turn the lights back on? Thank you very much. Thank you to the committee for going through the process. I know that it's not done, and I'm happy to hear that you will continue to take part in the discussions as we work with our new consultants, if approved. And I'm looking forward to how that will impact our community development. I know that I've seen a lot of things where we're so busy up there, doing so much work, that there's not enough time left to be able to enhance our processes, find new software, join the 21st century with some of the activities that we do. And I'm looking forward to some of those things coming to us, because I think that we can work just as hard and get so much more done if we have those efficiencies put into place. And it's been a difficult task to make those changes. I look forward to that. I will speak real quick about the fact that there is a waiving of the formal bidding. I have been a stickler in the past few weeks about the formal bidding. The fact that we got four bids out of the five typical amounts shows an effort to at least identify potential other agencies that can offer the same type of function. And we were able to compare and contrast. And I know that our committee did look at all the possibilities and eventually narrowed it down to the one individual that we're looking at here with Management Partners. So I, I am not going to be a stickler on this one because of the efforts that was made. Just wanted to make that publicly known. And before I speak on anything else, I'll open it to the rest of the board for any comments. Supervisor Scott?
I don't have any questions. Just want to thank the committee for this work. As we know, this, I think this department's the key to moving us forward. So I'm excited in the direction that we're going and really, really hopeful.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for doing this work. I know you asked the questions that I'm sure we've discussed long and ardently in the closed session, but also welcome Mr. Bosch, and thank you for considering us to come and help us as well.
Anything further? All right, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Anybody in the boardroom have any comments on this item? Okay, let's go ahead and go to phone 6205 in the Zoom room. You have three minutes.
Good morning. This is Bart Levinson. I'd like to direct my comments to Mr. Bosch and the Board of Supervisors, and of course Carol Hutchinson. My concern is that we are in a unique and very delicate time in Lake County concerning the fires, the drought, and that there are 300 pending applications backed up, many of which are for marijuana grows to go into residential areas, areas that may not be adequately prepared for fire and drought. This is a unique to right now situation that has never been before the county before in this way. And I'm very concerned that a company that isn't here will not be able to really be in the county, see the neighborhoods that are being affected, and really judge the proposals for permits fairly, not just on paper. The, in the past, the community development department has been short-staffed and faced difficulties having enough staff to go out and see each project and understand how it affects each area. So I would ask that some special focus be committed to in terms of our special needs in Lake County for fire and drought, and the immediate dangers facing us here.
Thank you for your comment, Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, I would just like to say that all those things that you bring up are always on, you know, on the front of our minds. So obviously, what we're looking to do is enhance the services. This transition that we're going through right now, we have talked about as a board, consulting services and other things to enhance the opportunities to take care of our constituents. And as always, it's always a local focus as we move forward. I know this is going to be a bit of a transition, as we said, out until October. We have our August date set for our permanent community development director interviews, and this is just going to be that process. So I appreciate those comments from Ms. Levinson. And believe me, we'll be focusing as a committee. This will be something that's continued now until we get the community development director, and then probably till the end of the year, just as we move forward through this transition, you know, providing more support to our great workforce that we have up there.
Supervisor Pyska?
And, yeah, I'd just like to add that we do understand this is unique and delicate. We've been working through this for years, and this is an opportunity for us to make an investment in this period of time and really dig into the work that, that we need to do to make this department successful, to build the strong foundation, to mentor the staff, you know, to, to move forward with strength. And so I appreciate the comments. And we have spent months considering this work, and we've spoken with Mr. Bosch and Management Partners about it several times, and with your, our board in closed session. So we're excited about this opportunity, and I, I really look forward to the work that we're going to be able to accomplish in the next few months.
And I would also suggest that there are laws and ordinances already passed, and the planning commission is supposed to function within the parameters of those laws and ordinances. And nothing is going to get changed without coming to the Board of Supervisors and getting finalized. This is not a outside company coming in to make their own changes. They will have suggestions, and they will have opportunities, but those changes and opportunities have to be finalized here at the Board of Supervisors, where the public will have the ability to make comments on. And we are always looking out for our local community. It is not going to be decided by others.
One more thing.
Please.
And maybe Mr. Bosch could explain how many days he plans to be in county each week, for the public to understand that his presence, that he will have a presence here.
Mr. Bosch, if you would like to elaborate on that?
With Carol's blessing, I'd be happy to. I plan to be there in person starting next Monday, starting off with a meeting with staff and Carol, and then immediately begin scheduling one-on-one interviews with key staff and stakeholders. One of the things Jan Perkins mentioned is that we have another associate of ours, Christine Butterfield, who is available to us, and we thought that it might be useful to involve her in the early stages of the work, so that we have kind of two sets of eyes and ears on the situation there, so we can rapidly get up to speed and begin to assist the county to the best of our abilities. Again, I've taken on these kinds of engagements in the past, and in fact, over the course of my entire career, I pride myself on my ability to get up to speed quickly and to begin to make meaningful contributions to those organizations. So I, I have confidence going in that we're going to be able to be supportive of your board and, and really be able to hear the community and understand what, you know, the issues are and where the opportunities lie. We also are very experienced in community engagement work, and, you know, we haven't fleshed that out entirely with Carol, but we would be happy to assist in areas like that to make sure that the ideas and the recommendations that we ultimately proffer are really grounded in, in kind of the local situation.
Thank you very much for that response. We have a hand up from Melissa Fulton in the Zoom room.
Good morning. Yes, Melissa Fulton, CEO of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. In listening to this particular presentation this morning, I have two questions. The first is, there was a reference to purchasing state-of-the-art or 21st century software programs that would enhance the department, the community development department. So my question there is, why wasn't this done previously? It would seem that it should have been done quite some time ago to assist the department. And then, obviously, Management Partners are very skilled and certainly have excellent backgrounds for all that they are going to bring to the table. However, I have a similar question. Why did the county not seek their services, not in the full capacity that's been described this morning, but certainly in some sort of an assistance capacity to help this department? We all know the challenges it has faced prior to Scott DeLeon taking on the job, and certainly plenty of challenges once he came on board. So it seems like perhaps we might, we, the county, might have moved a little more quickly to bring new technology to this department, which is so vital, and to enlist the services of Management Partners in some capacity. So those are my two, my two questions in my mind. And thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to comment.
And I'll respond to that. The idea of adding consultants to the equation over at community development has been talked about on and off and on since I've started. It's been, there's been complications in being able to provide the capacity to spend time on searching and finding the right consultants and preparing the RFPs. And there's also been some discussions and, and very close, not close calls, but very close to making a decision on upgrading software, and those have not been completed as well. Are, should we have done these things before earlier? Absolutely. But we're here today, and we're trying to make that change today. It, unfortunately, pieces of the puzzles always don't fall in the timely fashion that we would like it to fall in. And today, I think, is a good step forward to be able to make the change we're looking for. And Supervisor Pyska, you had some comments as well?
This is an opportunity to make an assessment of everything that's in our community development department, and that includes software and technology. And so we're just excited at the opportunity to make this investment at this time. And we're moving forward.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, oops. Yes, I appreciate the mention of the legacy issues by Melissa Fulton. And I want to highlight that the employees and the community development department did a, you know, did a really great job trying to trudge through all of those legacy issues, and also a hybrid situation, adding in the cannabis, including into community development. So it's, it's all, it's all new waters that we're treading on. And so we're doing our best to grasp this, and a very good job by this ad hoc committee to try to get us in the right direction.
And I see we have a hand up from Brian Martin. Sheriff Martin, if you can unmute. We can see your lips moving but can't hear you. Still nothing.
It looks like you're...
How about now?
Yes, we hear you now.
Barely. If we can get some volume.
You're quiet. Yeah, you're very quiet.
Talk about technology makes me realize we need technology all over the place. Hey, I, I think it's great that we're taking proactive...
Hold on one second, Sheriff. We could barely hear you. Sam, can we add some volume to that?
I can't turn you up.
Okay, let's try it again. If you could speak loudly, we could barely hear you.
Okay, how about now?
That's a little bit better. Let's go ahead and give it a shot.
All right. I'll probably get a new microphone this week. And I think it's great that we're doing something. I think community development's absolutely essential to the recovery of this county, and it goes hand in hand with public safety. As your board is aware, during last budget, we allocated some money for a position to fund a sergeant supervising a task force with a deputy sheriff and somebody from community development, code enforcement officer. The last two community development directors have been very cooperative in providing staff when they could in an effort. And we've actually got some projects underway where we're going in with kind of a two-pronged approach. I haven't heard any discussion, and I hope it doesn't slip by the wayside, that I would really like to see that, that program continue and have a commitment from the community development director, the Board of Supervisors, to continue participating in these projects as we go through this, this consulting phase and selection of a new community development director. That's my comment for this. I think it's been a very beneficial program. I think particularly in Supervisor Crandall's district, we've seen some, some positive results. And those positive results are very much dependent on the, the assistance that the sheriff's office gets from the code enforcement person at community development. That's all comments I have.
Thank you, Sheriff. We have Alicia Russell. Let's go ahead and unmute. If you can unmute. If you can unmute.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, Supervisors. I have a question about Item C, if I might ask?
Please, we've already discussed it, so yes.
Okay, thank you. So I do understand the need for financial oversight within the departments and normally expenses from a department are put into the financial system and they are reviewed by the Auditor Controller prior to having the Treasury process it. So I'm curious, in having the CAO's office controlling the finances for this department on a temporary basis, they would be being granted the authority to utilize and move monies at their own discretion. Who would be overseeing their decision-making?
So I'm going to speak just briefly and then I'll pass it on to our CAO to discuss. The idea right now is not to control the finances, it's to go over the approval process of the things such as contracts or the finances. And so there wouldn't be a level of control. That level of control would be held within the Board of Supervisors, the budget, and also with the new consulting agency that we're looking at to make some of the changes we hope to see. And of course, the committee would keep track and be discussing those things as they progress through the process. And I'll pass it on to CAO Hutchinson as well.
Yeah, you really covered it very well. Mr. Chair, the board ultimately holds budget authority over all departments' budgets and money is not going to be moved around in any manner that isn't customary for the department. This is just a short time to maintain the department until the next permanent director is here.
Thank you very much. Our next hand up is Lita Duncan. Good afternoon, oh, good morning.
Good morning. So my name is Lita Duncan. I'm the Administrative Assistant for CDD. I was just made aware of this change when the agenda was posted. So my question is, number one, I need, I need to know how many people are going to be joining us to make room because I don't know if people know, but we're really crowded in our department. We just recently filled all the positions for our Building Division, for our Code Division. So right now, we're, we've been trying to make room for planners. And so that's my first question is how many people will be coming into our department? The second one is, like I said, we have a few vacancies for planning and I would just like to know, moving forward, how are we going to be advertising those positions? I just don't want there to be like a waiting period. I just kind of want to keep moving, keep going. And that's pretty much where I'm at. That's my job for the department and I just want to make sure that there's a smooth transition. I know that for our department, a lot of the staff was, we were kind of shocked, you know, about all of these changes that have been happening. But, you know, we're doing what we got to do. And yeah, so those are my questions.
And I would suggest that as for the first part of the question, we needed to approve this prior to having a conversation of logistics. And I'm sure that conversation will occur momentarily if this is approved. And as far as the second part, that will probably be discussed at greater length during our budgeting agenda that is tomorrow. And I'll pass it up. I'm going to start with Supervisor Simon, but I know I have three people who want to speak.
Yeah, you know, in our committee discussions, obviously, we continue moving forward. There are budget allocations to get those positions filled and we're going to continue moving forward with those at this time. There is no stopping and waiting as we're moving forward. We're going to continue capacity building while we're doing this through the process. And, you know, I will pass that off to Jessica. But these are conversations we've been having. This is not to limit or stop anything that we're doing. This is to bring it in and enhance our Community Development Department with this consulting opportunity. And as we move forward to continue everything, even the sheriff talked about hoping things aren't going away. No, this is going to be moving towards the, you know, the opportunity of providing more services continuing down the path of building capacity, so.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, we're committed to carrying all of this work forward, but we have to do it better and we have to do it more efficiently. So that's why we we are suggesting this choice so that we're not waiting for another director and waiting through that recruitment time. We have a window of time and we're going to use that the best that we can with this, with this, with this contract with Management Partners and this team that's going to come in. And I understand that staff is just learning about this now. But we have been working on this for months. We've, we've given David, you know, the entire workload. So Monday, we're going to be here bright and early. We're going to be meeting with all of staff and we're going to go through a bit of an orientation so that everybody's on the same page. There's going to be a time to answer all of the questions. And and then, as he mentioned, he's going to start meeting with everybody one-on-one. And I'm sure Sheriff Martin is going to be one of those people shortly. I, I know this is all new, but, but, but please just see this as an opportunity to support all of the work that our staff has been doing.
CAO Hutchinson.
And so the supervisor's covered it well. And I think the only thing I would add is that the only Management Partners consultant that will need a physical presence here some of the time is David Bosch. And surely there has been a workstation available for leadership in the department. So, but we'll go over all of those details with Ms. Duncan and all the staff on Monday.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And then one last hand, phone 6205, and then we'll go to the boardroom if there's any public comments.
This is a repeat, Mr. Chair. 6205 has already spoken.
Yeah, let's keep it succinct.
Yes, I was glad to hear Sheriff Martin speak to this matter. I understand that his department is also understaffed and again, that at this time, in the time of drought and fire bearing down upon us, bringing in more marijuana grows into residential neighborhoods also increases the stress on the staff of the sheriff. I'd like to ask again that the board and the Planning Department consider pausing these applications for large marijuana grows until they have their staffing worked out and are confident with the ability to properly move forward safely and securely for Lake County.
And I would suggest that you stick around for the 2:30 PM item as that discussion may carry some of the exact concerns that you have. And let's go ahead and open it up for any public comment here in the boardroom.
Hello, I'm Justin Quayle. I'm so happy that you guys are doing this because there is no accountability for the workers that are working on cannabis projects. And people like us, some of us have to, you know, if they don't look over paperwork, it just gets overskipped. And then we have to hire another consultant to do a job that was already done the first time. So that is great that you have people. And hopefully, we can get inspections going out on the field, going out there. We've been applied for three years and haven't had an inspection. Well, of course, we haven't been able to open either for business. We've been cultivating up there for over 30 years. So we're not on a watershed that's going to bother anybody. We're in a snowpack area where we can't grow in the wintertime. So the light depths and all the other things that causes all these people down in the cities problems wouldn't be an issue up there. So I'm so happy that you guys are getting, hopefully, people that are going to be accountable for their work and not just attacking emails that they're, they're overworked, you know? We're all overworked. Some of us can't work at all until those projects are done. So thank you and I'm glad that you guys are trying to do something. That's great to see. Thank you.
And just for inspections, they started last week. Last year, we did inspections of all use permits as well. They started last week for inspections. And we also have a new satellite high-definition imagery that helps us to understand what exactly is happening on people's lands. And so inspections are occurring. Yes, we probably need to be more robust, but at the same time, the efforts are being made.
I'm just hoping you guys are not going to start busting all the people that are inactive and just waiting for inspection. That would be horrible.
I will say this. There are rules and if you're not following the rules, then there's a risk.
Well, there's also a risk when you guys are not following your own rules that you guys make.
And and that, that is a different situation.
Exactly.
It is a different situation.
Any further comments in the boardroom on this item? All right, I do have one more hand raised in the Zoom room, Jennifer Smith.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have three minutes.
I'm just a little bit concerned because it feels like a very presumptive presentation and that a lot of work was behind the scenes, which can be taken one way or another. But it sounds like a great idea to have somebody come in and evaluate and help redirect or rebuild CDD while we look for an interim or appoint an interim or find somebody to manage it. But I'm concerned about very time-sensitive projects that have been lingering since Board Direction in February. And I'm wondering what we're going to do about those time-sensitive projects while we're assessing the CDD, if anything can be done. And I just think that that needs to be a point of concern for both, you know, the Planning Department, Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors, just to make sure that everyone is being held accountable until we can start this new process. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'm sure that you have noticed, as many others have, that our Planning Commissions are being packed with use permit applications. And as far as those with early activations, I can't speak specifically as to how or what is going to happen to that as that is in the hands of the planners and the Community Development to make the decision based on the rules that we have provided them. And I think that's as far as I can go unless you speak directly to your planners. But there have been discussions here. That's as far as I'm going to go unless we have somebody on the Zoom that would like to speak further on that. Okay, seeing none. So it looks like we're done with public comment at this point. I will say that this, I see this as a positive. I know, I know that it's somewhat light on the details, but at the same time, we're talking about reviewing an entire department and the details are many. The details are somewhat still unknown until the, a review has been made and then decisions and suggestions will come up. As far as the experience that I've seen from Mr. Bosch, it appears to me that he has the experience that we require. Not only does he have the experience of planning, but the experience of being a CEO of a county as well to understand the absolute involvement of administration as well as the finite details of looking through a zoning ordinance and things like that. I appreciate the fact that we have managers, Management Partners in front of us because we need to figure out how to allow our staff on the third floor to be able to not go home stressed, not go home feeling overworked and not go home feeling like they just, it is, it is hard up there. We have to find a better way to treat our staff upstairs. And I think this will provide the opportunities. And I sure hope that we allow to go the full, the full amount so that we can make those changes. Some of them may be difficult, some of them may be large changes. But I think that our aim is to enhance efficiencies both for staff and for the applicants so that both have a better experience when going through these processes. So I am looking forward to what will happen. I think that Mr. Bosch will come in and see the things that are working, such as the new program that our sheriff discussed between his department and Code Enforcement. And nothing will disappear without the approval of the planning, of the Board of Supervisors. We are adamant about the things that we want and the things that are working and the things that we wish to change. And so I think that, I think that we will be moving forward methodically and we will be moving forward with great success. Any further comments from board members before we take action? And I see that phone 6205 put their hand back up, but I have closed public comment on this item at this moment. Any further comments or are we ready for action?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 2-3, 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of services, goods and services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Our motion from Supervisor Simon and a second from Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve the agreement for consulting services for the Lake County Community Development Department with, I apologize right here.
For the amount of $100,000?
Yes, for the amount of $100,000.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Pyska. Roll call, please, Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I would also like to move the consideration appointment of the county administrative officer or designee as interim Community Development Director.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon.
Supervisor, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
And that takes care of Item 6.3. Thank you both for Management Partners. And Mr. Bosch, we look forward to meeting you. All right, moving on to Item 6.4. So we do have two more items before our 10:00 AM. I know it's almost an hour later.
Mr. Chair, I might suggest that 6.4 and 6.5, since it's staff-presented items, could wait. We've had a lot of people waiting here, so if you'd like to let them wait.
And before we start anything on Item 6.6, because it's going to be a lengthy item, I'm going to ask for a 10-minute break and then we come back. That way, we don't have a break in between. I think it's important that staff get their break, we get our breaks, and then we come back and make sure we focus on the task at hand. So let's come back in actually eight minutes. So we'll be back here at 11:00 AM. Hello. Hey, there I am. If we can get back into our seats. Sorry that I came back a little late. It was very important that I get my cup of coffee. I apologize for being selfish. Thank you so much. All right, welcome back. We are going to postpone our 9:45 AM 6.4 item and our 9:50 AM 6.5 item so that we can go ahead and make sure that the people that are here for Item 6.6, we're already an hour late, so let's not make it any later for you guys. So we're going to get this one started. 10:00 AM, Public Hearing, Discussion and Consideration of Appeal to Board of Supervisors, AB 21-01 for Major Use Permit, UP 20-22 and IS/MND? We good? Okay. Slash MND 20-25, We Grow LLC. And I'm sorry, Ms. Grant, I did not ask you, do we need to ask people to swear in before we start testimonies?
Yes, sir. All witnesses will have to be sworn. The department will present its case first, followed by the appellant's, and certainly the project applicant will be entitled to speak.
Okay, so all of those who are going to speak today, we're going to need to swear you in. And Johanna will do so virtually through Zoom. But if you could all stand, including our staff, and raise your right hand. And if you're in Zoom, please turn on your camera so we can see you. And then, Johanna, I think everybody looks pretty ready.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
All right, thank you very much.
And just say "I do" so I can hear it over Zoom.
Everybody said "I do."
Okay, thank you.
Except for, I didn't see the lips moving, but I heard it. We're going to go with the honor system on that one. And let's go ahead and open this up, and we're going to start with staff. And so Director Deleon, would you like to introduce this, and then we'll move on?
Yes, good morning. Let me get to the correct screen here. Thank you. I, thank you Chairman Sabatier, and good morning to you and the members of the board, everyone in the board chambers. I have some brief comments about the item. As you're aware, this is a very large project, and it's certainly the subject of a great deal of public interest, as evidenced this morning by the attendance at today's hearing. We've been diligent in our evaluation of the appeal and the questions raised about the environmental analysis for this project, and as a result of our review, we have made some modifications to our recommendations for this item. As a result of our review, we've discovered some procedural errors that have rendered the initial study to be defective, and this project cannot move forward as presented. Changes were made to the project during the review process, and the potential impacts to the environment that could result from those changes were not adequately considered. Due to these factors, we are recommending granting of the appeal and denying the project without prejudice. We are expecting the applicant will reapply, which is their right to do so.
Hold on, Director Deleon, would you please restart your last sentence? There was a outburst in the room.
Okay. We are expecting the applicant will reapply, which is their right to do so, and staff will make revisions to the environmental analysis to address the modified site plan, as well as the concerns raised by the public. In conclusion, again, we are recommending that the board grant appeal AB 21-01 and deny a major use permit UP 20-22 without prejudice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further comment from staff before we move on? I would like to get some comments from Ms. Grant, just to kind of explain the denial without prejudice as to what that, what that does.
The denial without prejudice under this case allows, under zoning ordinance 60.32, for your board to deny a use permit without prejudice, and that would allow for the reaplication without waiting what would otherwise be a standard six months. The important thing to understand here is that your board would be effectively foreclosed from making findings that you are required to make in a de novo proceeding in order to grant or deny a use permit, because the sequoia analysis that you have before you is defective, and you cannot rely upon it in order to make the decisions that you have to make. So it is not just a choice, it is effectively the only reasonable choice you can make, which is to grant the appeal and deny the use permit without prejudice that will allow the applicant to reapply, but it will also allow the department to take the necessary corrective action as to the sequoia analysis, which must be done before either the Planning Commission, which will have to hear the matter again once all is corrected, and/or your board can move forward.
Okay, thank you very much for those details. Any further comments from staff before we open it up for the appellant? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up for the appellant, if they wish to speak in light of the changes that we just kind of brought up.
That's from the audience, correct?
The, the appellant would be the group that appealed the project itself.
Good morning, my name is Jim Ryan. I live in Hidden Valley, Green Ridge Road area, directly below the proposed project. I appreciate the recommendation to just move forward. We would applaud that motion. The continuing issue would be the idea of a variance in that particular area. So it may be a mute point currently, but however, the concerns will still be there in six months or a year. So the idea to reconsider the close proximity to major residential areas, number one, concerning water.
May, may I pause you for one second? You have a microphone right in front of you, so whether or not your mask, we're going to hear you, please.
Okay, very good, thank you. So in any case, we don't want it to be a continuing issue, however it may be, but if there is a way to revisit the variances between major residential areas and these types of large-scale commercialized businesses, so to speak, because the majority of the people here aren't here against the marijuana issue. Number one, it'd be the water. So we've heard that argument by a lady earlier on another issue, that kind of hit the nail on the head for the majority of us in that regard. Area impacts, the study itself, the roads in those areas are far insufficient for the amount of push for commercial usage. It, it, just a matter of living in the area, those roads up there are so deteriorated, they painted the fog line over dirt and rocks. They're already gone. So I mean, there's things, issues in that area, but everybody here has been long-term residents of that particular area. I've been on that property and that site. It's a beautiful piece of property, lovely springs, surrounded by hills, wildlife, et cetera. So the usage for that area, that rapid of a change amongst all of us, frankly, we're all in shock. So I really appreciate the fact that the county would reconsider and put in to stop that from moving forward, and definitely relook at it, because there are major scientific EIR reports to look at. Even our local water district stood in opposition and wrote letters to you all. I want to be here today to personally thank all of you that took an interest to come down to that location and to get a hands-on, bird's-eye view what the problems and the concerns would be. I, I personally say thank you for that. And if you didn't or didn't have the opportunity to review that information, I think you'd be remiss in not reviewing that. So thank you very much for your time. We certainly are here to oppose that project moving forward, and, and thank you for moving the appeal forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the appellant's?
Good morning, my name is Dan Levine, and I live in the Shadow Hills subdivision, and I'm very happy to hear the, the planner's decision to put this project on hold and review it again. This changes, of course, what I had to say a little bit, now that we know it's, it's going to be continued. But the, the negative impacts from this project would have been very substantial and quite numerous. And as the last person mentioned, those problems won't go away once they reapply. They need to be addressed properly and mitigated properly, more so than they were in the faulty initial report, which the, the planner mentioned was, was faulty and not up to SEQA standards. So, you know, I heard a lot about, from the, from the assistant planner who wrote the initial study about how overworked he was and overwhelmed, and I can, I can appreciate that because of the shortage of staff, but at the same time, I think this project should have never made it past project review, considering such a heavily residential area. And it kind of reminds me of the teenager that murdered his parents and then went to court, came before the judge, and asked for leniency because he was an orphan. I mean, if they would have seen this project was ill-suited to the area initially, we wouldn't have, have, had to gone through so much angst and, and work to try to resolve this issue. So please don't trade our environment and our quality of life for a few extra tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, from the appellant group, wish to speak?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Scott Nagelson, and my family owns a property that is adjacent to this proposed commercial development. I came here prepared to pound my fist on the lectern and stomp my feet and ask you to, to uphold this appeal. I'm grateful for what has transpired. But I want you to know, and I want to thank my neighbors for coming out, that we're not going to go away. We will be back if they reapply, and we are all adamant that this is inappropriate for our neighborhood. So I just want to make that statement, that we're determined. We're grateful that you're going to discuss the drought, that you're going to discuss large-scale ag approvals in this meeting later on, and we hope that you, that you make some informed and reasonable decisions there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning, my name is Sean Millerick. I'm one of the directors with the Hidden Valley Community Services District. I'm here representing myself and my family, not the district. But I did want to address the fact that the Community Services District, the water district there, we did write a letter protesting this in the first place, especially at the urging of our general manager, Dennis White, and I strongly believe that was the right thing to do and is the right thing to do. I don't believe it's well-suited to the area, not just because of its proximity to residences, but also because of the effect it can have on the watershed and the natural wildlife as well. So often, people look out the hills, they see a larger amount of scrub, and that's about it, particularly if you're coming from a little bit further west, and you're coming from, you know, redwoods or cities or something like that. They don't see how teeming with life those areas are and how damaging it can be when you, you know, you're running dozers and trucks in there, in and out constantly, damaging that area, the effect it has on the wildlife and the harm it can do to the earth, and never mind the effect it has on the neighbors in general, or on limited water resources as well. The lack of, in my opinion, a sufficient EIR or hydrology studies, I think both of those things need to be addressed to a much greater degree for any sort of project in this size going forward. There are a number of land acquisitions that have been made in that area, both on, you know, that side of 29, as well as out towards Harbin and, you know, Liberty Lane, that could be potential issues as well. So I, I would hope that you guys would take the time to consider that a little bit more deeply, and also that the Planning Commission itself would consider that a little bit better in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I want to make sure that there's a difference between public comment on this item and the appellant's. If you are part of the group that appealed this project, you get to speak now. I want to make sure to give the project applicants time to say something as well before we truly open it up for public comment. If you're part of the appealing group, then please come on in.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I can't hear anything out there.
Thank you for being patient, and sorry that we're at capacity, but we're making sure that we don't miss anyone.
Thank you. So as everyone else has said, my speech I will not deliver because of the great news this morning. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Carly Sherman, and I've had the pleasure of serving with many of you on meetings in the community, and I just wanted to, along with everyone else, say thank you for this time given to the permit and for not approving it. It really means the world to the community, and I hope not to be here again, so you don't have to hear my whole speech, but we graciously appreciate you saving our community and giving our kids the gift of health. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other individual, part of the appellant group, who wishes to speak?
Good morning, my name is Jesse Kood. I'm also a resident of the Shadow Hills subdivision. I could speak on this for five hours, but I know I don't have that much time, and I've met with several of you already and talked to you on the phone. Appreciate your time that you have put into this. So I do have a couple of things, though, that I would like to bring up. I hope that you guys can get together and find grounds to uphold this appeal with prejudice, so that we're not back here again. And I also would like to request, on part of my group, that you refund all the appeal money and the attorney money, because we should not have to pay for others' mistakes. And also, I'd like you guys to consider declaring a state of emergency for the exceptional drought and not allow any new permits for any kind of growing, not just pot, wineries, that kind of stuff. I think that you have enough information available to you from the state. You drive down Highway 20 right now, and you see a sign that says, "Conserve Water, Extreme Drought." So that's about all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further comments from the applicant group, from the appellant group?
I'm Deborah Bainbridge, and I want to thank you for the ruling that you've given us today, and especially, I want to thank those of you that came onsite to look at it. That's really important. Also, I just want to say, you know, it's not severe drought, it's not extreme drought. The New York Times called it exceptional drought. I think that that should be grounds to say, no, we can't have this going on right now. And I wish you would consider that. I'm also concerned about, you know, if the appellate, if the We Grow people, if they come back with a second application and you can't find any reason to deny it, my concern is, who, who's going to enforce the regulations about air quality and water quality, and who's going to pay when we run out of water? These things need to be addressed, because I, I can't see, it, it's just like corporate America. It's easier to pay a fine than it is to remedy a problem. I have a deep concern about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments from the appellant group? Okay, I believe that we have the applicant on the Zoom room. And we have Sufian Hamouda, the consultant for the group, with his hand raised, if we can make sure to unmute.
Yes, this is Sufian Hamouda.
Yep.
I'm speaking on behalf of my applicant, We Grow LLC. We did receive an email from CDD staff yesterday, letting us know that the department would be changing their recommendation today due to procedural oversight in the SEQA that was submitted for this project, and we do agree with the staff's new recommendations. I've already spoken with our planner to work closely with the department to make sure that the amended, amended SEQA document is accurate for the proposed project before having voted again in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I see no further hands raised in the Zoom room, and so any public comment of those who were sworn in that wish to speak up?
Hello, my name's Eric Arberg. I'm not at Hidden Valley, but I'm just up the road at Hoffbacker. I'm the president of the Puma Lakes Ranch subdivision up there. My concern is water. We've heard it over and over. I can tell you right now that half of our wells, or our residents, are barely getting water out wells right now, and we got a lot of months ago to finish this year. I'd like to see us not be such money-grabbing people for taxes, and think about the fact that you're going to put households without water. We don't have any means, we don't have any city water available, and trucking water's expensive, and a lot of people don't have the means. So I have four wells, and three of them are empty right now, and this is just early June. So I applaud them stopping that, and I hope you stop the one on the other side of us with hawking horses coming up in two days. And there's many more in this county, and they need to be slowed down. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the board chambers?
Good morning, or afternoon. My name's Kenny Sherman, and I live on Dallas Court. And I too came here somewhat angry today, and that's kind of gone away, and that's kind of changed, and it changed before, somewhat before we heard the news from them. Once I got to hear you guys speak, and I kind of got to know a few of you, and I see that you guys do care about your community, I didn't feel that way after watching a few of these and seeing what happened with some of the meetings with and seeing what happened with some of the meetings with the Planning Commission. I don't think that they care as much about the community. A community is a lot different than a town. A community is the people. The community is the people that get together and help each other when a fire rips through. They look after each other. Outsiders that come here to turn a profit, that have no connection to our community, don't care about our community. They're not here to coach kids' sports teams. They're not here to look after each other when we're out of town or when we're stuck away because of a fire evacuation. And if it's just money that we're going after, then where does it end? If we're going to put money above everything, money above our children's futures, money above our community, money above water? Salmon and Steelhead are going to be trucked to the ocean from the Central Valley because there will not be enough water for them to swim back to the ocean. That is how bad the water is this year. Farmers who grow fruits and vegetables, things that we need to eat to live, are changing their crops. They're planting half their fields. And people think they have the right to come into our community and grow marijuana. I think that is absolutely ridiculous. I think that, I know a few of you guys have to feel the same way on that. And I appreciate the decision that was made today. And I'm glad I got to hear a few of you talk and I got to meet a few of you today. And I feel that you guys do care about your community. And I hope to see that these decisions stay the same moving forward. Thank you for your time.
I have not been responding to any of the public comments, but I feel I need to respond that the planning commissioners absolutely do care about this community. They live in our communities, they represent our districts, were appointed by us here as Board of Supervisors. They have also restrictions on how they can consider projects in front of them. They are shackled by the rules and regulations that we have created as well. And so just want to make sure and put it out there that our planning commissioners do care about their communities. Sometimes we make decisions here that you don't agree with, and sometimes we make decisions here that you agree with. And I think it's very similar for the Planning Commission as well. Just thought I needed to say something because it might be perceived as such based on maybe specific projects, but as a whole, they absolutely do care. Any further public comment? And I see one in the Zoom room, phone 6205. Let's go ahead and unmute, please.
Yes, thank you for what you just said, Supervisor Sabatier. You said earlier that your board relies on the recommendations of the Planning Commission. And I'd like to suggest that this case is a canary in the coal mine. If you go back and listen to the meeting in which this plan was reviewed by the Planning Commission, they listened to more than an hour and a half of solid reasons to object. And then at the end, they said, "We care, but we have no basis to deny this." And so I think that, as I said earlier, with fire danger and with drought, we are in a new situation that the old rules do not apply to currently and do not work for the situation and the dangers that we face. And it isn't adequate. However, the Planning Commission might care if they are shackled, as you say, by their rules. It is urgent that those rules be reexamined. It's not okay to just say, "The rules are the rules." Not anymore.
Next, we have Donna McAvix.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Donna McAvix, representing Red Bud Audubon Society. We support the Planning Commission's request to grant the appeal. We noted only parcel ending in 40 was surveyed, and no biological data on the other two parcels had been done to date. And it also mentioned seeing an unknown species of bird, which leads us to believe the report must have been done in haste. And also, there were reports of two unusual sightings for the site on this date, 0.02% of probability that bird would have even been here. The biological report stated only 10 species of birds. And I walked the property perimeter just a couple hours, and I saw 40 species on Sunday. So thank you for considering and accepting the request to appeal and look at it more closely. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I see no further comments in the Zoom room. I'm just going to come back to the board chambers, make sure we got everyone. Any further comment?
Good morning. I'm Shannon Williams. My family and I have lived here in Lake County for 17 years. I know many of you. I really appreciate your time and very excited to hear the news today. I realize this is probably going to come up again in the future, so I kind of just want to speak to that. There's a few things that I mentioned in my letter to you already that I would hope you guys really consider in moving forward. One was the amount of unpermitted activity that the We Grow people started the minute they bought the project. Construction, moving of dirt, illegal grow was started immediately. They asked for forgiveness later and then denied knowledge of stuff. And to me, it's kind of like, why are we rewarding that bad behavior because they came later to ask for forgiveness? So I would ask that you take that into consideration if and when this comes up again. The other thing I would add, and this is a weird subject for me because I'm a real estate agent. I have utmost respect for the real estate agents in our area. However, on the Planning Commission, you have a real estate agent who has the same brokerage as who sold these people that parcel. So my father was a judge. I'm really big on letter of the law and recusing yourself. If you have a conflict of interest, and I see a huge conflict of interest there, nothing against this agent in particular, but it's a small brokerage. Yes, there's two different offices, but there's 10 agents total. So I don't see how myself as an agent can sell someone a parcel and then turn around and be totally objective and say, "No, I'm not going to give you this permit that I just talked to you into buying." So I feel like just for moving forward, if it's something that you guys can have a little more oversight of your planning commissioners to make sure that if there is a potential conflict, we just remove it altogether so that there's not a conflict and that it doesn't come up and raise red flags with the community so that we can trust those commissioners when they make their choices. Thank you.
If I can ask everybody to make sure to keep your masks on. I know that in a week, it's all gone, but the rules are the rules at this moment in time, and we'd like to follow those rules. Any further public comment in the room before we bring it back to the board?
First of all, I'd like to thank you guys again for your time and the hours you put into reviewing this project. And for those of you who have come out, I know you guys are very, very busy, so thank you. And I echo what my neighbors have said, and I believe you guys are concerned about the community, not just revenue. I don't think it's like that. There's many grows, cannabis grows in Lake County and surrounding counties, and they're here to stay, I believe. They're not going anywhere. My issue's not with that. You know, it seems like a lot of these larger grows tend to be in areas that are kind of on the outskirts and away from other neighbors. And there's probably exceptions to that, but it seems that that's the case generally speaking, and they're not surrounded by peoples whose only water source is a well. And I've actually spoken with We Grow, and I've told them my concerns directly. And I'm just asking for some, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for some assurance that my wells, who's about, you know, it's about 1,000 feet away from their well, isn't going to be impacted. And there's relatively simple, not simple for me, but for hydrologists to do a study and to look at the impact. I've spoken to two hydrologists, and they said there's relatively inexpensive studies, $10,000 to $20,000, which, you know, is a lot for a lot of people, but not for a large grow. Just to give the community, the county, the Board of Supervisors, and frankly, themselves, some assurance that there's enough water to do what they're proposing to do. And I just ask that, I ask We Grow to consider and ask you guys to encourage We Grow or to require We Grow to offer some substantial evidence that their operations aren't going to affect our wells. That's our only option. We don't have a city water if our well fails. My other concern, which I've also communicated in the planning meeting and to We Grow, is the traffic through our residential neighborhood. And my wife goes on runs regularly, my kids ride down there, ride their bikes, neighboring kids walk their dogs every single day. And the number I've heard is an extra 40 to 80 trips through the neighborhood. And if there's another, if there's a way to mitigate that and to have a different option for an access, I think that would be appropriate also. I don't think putting a yield sign in or some speed bumps or anything is really going to be a fair mitigation. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Any further comments? Last call. Please.
I testify, I hadn't decided to.
You weren't sworn in?
No, I wasn't sworn in.
Okay, let's go ahead and swear you in. Johanna, can you please do a swearing in?
Yeah, with your right hand raised. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Yes, I do. Thank you. My name is Randy Fletcher. I'm not as eloquent as these people on back of me. I am not going to tell you how bad things are. I'm going to tell you what happened to me personally. This, three years ago, the grow next to me put in a brand-new well, a domestic well. And during this time, the water just, I lost all my water. I've been without a water for two years over this. I have to have hot water hauled in. I'm a disabled vet. I'm on Social Security. I don't make a lot of money. And it costs me an extra $250 every month for this. So he can grow his marijuana. And he does it, and he's been doing it for three years. I mean, he's been, you know, it's there. And you guys have cited him for, well, okay, you did do the abatement of his product about, what, about 18 months ago? Nothing changed. As soon as it was gone, there was new plants in there. I had to say something, I'm sorry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for speaking. Again, any final public comments before we close it up? Okay, and I believe Ms. Grant has something to say.
Just as a point of information, Mr. Chair, thank you. Just so that everyone is aware, this is going to be a reapplication process. This isn't just kicking it back to the Planning Commission. This will have to be a reapplication process. And staff will have the opportunity to have an accurate and sufficiently comprehensive sequel analysis. And again, keep in mind that for a use permit, there are certain findings that have to be made. And those include adequate services, including water supply. They include streets and highways and pedestrian facilities and the comfort and general welfare of the neighborhood. So the department will have a number of things to consider once they have an accurate and comprehensive sequel review of this particular project.
Thank you very much. And I know that there was one comment that was made about denying it with prejudice. And I would say, based on the fact that we don't have appropriate documentation that matches the project, there is no decision to be made on the project other than just denying without, I forgot what I was going to say, without prejudice. And so we were told earlier, we've gone over it. I know I did a lot of research yesterday to figure out if there was any other way through this process. And that is really the only appropriate legal route that we have in front of us. We need to make sure that the documentations are up to date based on the latest project description. It needs to be thrown through the clearinghouse and the sequel process all over again. And at that point, public comments and all public meetings will have to reoccur where your voices, I'm sure, will probably be heard then. And so I look forward to seeing what that process looks like. And I would say, speak to us, speak to your supervisors. If there's things that you feel that in the ordinance, which does create the box within projects, can and cannot be approved if things need to be changed because now we're seeing new things that we have not yet seen before. I think that it took about three years to craft the original ordinance. There's been some amendments, but not a complete revision. And hearing your concerns and your voices, I think, will lead us to looking at this ordinance and saying, okay, well, maybe before, they were all the way out in the middle of nowhere, and that was perfectly appropriate. And maybe right now, it's getting a little closer to areas that are sensitive. But I think that you need to work with the Board of Supervisors, who will then be able to look at this ordinance and make revisions based on new information that we're receiving. The goal, I know I've heard a lot about grows in residential areas. Community growth boundaries are out. That is our residential areas. Rural residential, where agriculture is allowed, from a slaughterhouse to a vineyard to animal husbandry, things like that are all allowed. That's where it's starting to get a little sensitive for certain areas where it feels more like it's residential, but yet it's still designated rural residential. Let's have that conversation and see where it goes. But at this moment in time, it fits within the box. Let's make sure the sequel documents match the project description, and let's see where that goes. So thank you very much for all of your comments. I think that we have not much of a choice of what our action is for today. But if anyone has any further comments, I'd love to hear those before we take action. Supervisor Simon.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much for your comments. And I want to thank everybody, you know, who attended today and everyone who's given comment on this, on both sides. As we move forward, you know, establishing this new industry in Lake County comes with its challenges. There is no doubt about it. I've heard it, the comments today, that this is something that is here. We need to work through this to make sure that we can fit it into the community. It is one portion of the economic development opportunities, but it's also another as we integrate it into the lives and the communities that we all serve. We're not always going to make everybody happy on every decision, but I'll tell you, I know this board is committed to go out, have those conversations with folks, and really let everybody know that we are trying to work through this process as we go. No one saw the drought, no one saw the pandemic. I mean, we have been in a drought position, but it's getting worse. So these are things that we'll take on each time. And as we move through this process, each one of these things, applications and use permits will be taken on a case-by-case basis. I think we said that when we wrote the ordinance, and we'll continue to do that as we move through this process. So once again, we're never going to make everybody happy, but we take this very serious as we are establishing this industry here in Lake County. I think at some point, it'll be something for those folks in the industry will be able to be proud of. And if it can be integrated, we'll attempt to do that in the best way that we can. So that's all that I have today.
Thank you for your comments. Any further comments before we take action? Looks like we're ready for action.
I want to make sure I get it correctly here, Anita. So the motion will be to approve the appeal without prejudice?
The motion will be to grant the appeal on the basis that the sequel analysis is defective and to deny the use permit for this project without prejudice.
So moved.
Second.
It's always easier that way.
Yes.
Motion by Supervisor Simon and second by Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, and thank you to staff also for reviewing this project and making the necessary changes to bring to us this morning. Okay, let's go ahead and take two minutes to clear the room, and then we'll come back. So we are back. We are going to continue on our six point seven eleven AM item, public hearing, consideration of resolution approving resolutions and capital fire facility and equipment plans submitted by Lake County Fire Agencies, and updating the Lake County Capital Fire Facility and Equipment Plan. Cao Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is an annual item that comes to your board, this resolution before you today. If you act on this resolution, it will approve the resolutions and capital fire facility and equipment plans submitted by all the local fire districts. This goes back to nineteen ninety-two, when your board adopted an ordinance establishing those fire mitigation fees. The fees are collected at the time of the issuance of building permits, and then they are allocated to the affected fire agency where the development is occurring. The fees are used for expansion and construction of fire facilities and purchase of equipment necessitated by the new development. And so in preparation for this annual item coming to your board, each year, the fire agencies pass their own internal resolutions, which request that the county collect the fees, and then the board of supervisors approves all of those, hence today's action. The max that can be charged is a dollar per square foot of the construction, and each agency is continuing to request that amount. That is the amount that they have all been requesting for at least the last few years. So that is the basis for this item.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the fees being maintained to try and still stir up development, as well as being able to collect those fees to enhance our fire stations and adding more equipment and whatnot. Is that a comment? I wasn't sure. Any comment from supervisors on this item?
No.
So I will just be an open book. I am going to be discussing with county council if there's anything that we can change within the resolutions that all of our fire districts have been approving. The language kind of, I'm not comfortable with, and I'm just gonna read out loud what I'm not comfortable with, the lack of fire protection, and it's the reason for the fire fees. It lists three reasons. The lack of fire protection facilities and equipment to serve new development would create a situation perilous to public health and safety if fire mitigation fees were not levied within the district. I think that's a very harsh statement, and I'd love to see if, obviously, this was written so that they can legally request the fees, and I'd love to see if we can soften the language, saying new development requires more resources. This would help us ensure that we have all the resources to keep the community safe as we grow and develop. Something along those lines just seems more comfortable than saying it's perilous if we don't do this. So that's just something that kind of struck me as I was reading through all the materials. Seemed to not have struck me before, because this has been done multiple times for me already, but that's my only comment on this item. Other than that, I'm ready to approve after we open it up for public comment. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment in the boardroom. See nothing in the Zoom room. See nothing, and let's bring it back to the board for action. To approve a resolution of resolutions.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer the resolution.
The resolution has been offered by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please.
What's that?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that finishes our eleven AM item. Cao Hutchinson, do we have staff for our nine forty-five or nine fifty AM item available?
Yes, Stephen Carter is going to present those, and if you would like to start with the first one, which would be six point four, we'll also contact Lars Ewing and see if he can join for six point five.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Stephen, I believe you're in the Zoom? Yes, he is.
I am.
So we'll start with item six point four, nine forty-five AM item. A, consideration of budget transfer in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from Budget Unit One Seven Eight One, Special Projects Account Seven One Seven Point Five Five Dash Zero Seven, to Budget Unit One One Two Two, Treasurer Tax Collector Account Seven One One Point Two Three Dash Eighty, for services related to a second tax sale for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, and authorize the chair to sign. And B, consideration of budget transfer in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from Budget Unit One Seven Eight One, Special Projects Account Seven One Seven Point Five Five Dash Zero Seven, to Budget Unit One Two Three One, County Council Account Seven One Two Point Zero One Dash Eleven, to cover permanent salaries through the end of the fiscal year, and authorize the chair to sign. Mr. Carter?
Good morning, Board. Stephen Carter, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer. I do want to start off by saying that that subject line that Bruno just read pretty much explains it all, but what it comes down to for the first one, related to the Treasurer Tax Collector's Office, your board adopted a resolution on March second, twenty twenty-one, to approve five hundred extra properties to be put on for tax sale. Well, there's about five hundred dollars per property in expenses that were not previously budgeted. We were hopeful that the current appropriations would cover the year, but that is not the case to where we are asking for you to take appropriations out of Budget Unit One Seven Eight One, and then put them into Budget Unit Eleven Twenty Two, so that they can perform the tax sales duties and have sufficient appropriations for the rest of the year. Do you want me to do A and then B?
Let's go ahead and go through A and B together. Yes.
Okay, well, let me also say, state the reason why Budget Unit Seventeen Eighty One has the appropriations available. That is special projects where we set money aside for certain things. That specific account number fifty five oh seven is for code enforcement positions, and we currently do fund the code enforcement manager, manager, excuse me, through that account. But with the appropriations budgeted in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, there is sufficient surplus to take care of these transfers. So item B is for county council. They are in the same situation where, in their fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget, they, to make everything, because it was a ditto budget, and we weren't giving out any extra net county cost, ongoing revenue sources, they had to take salary savings within their budget to make everything else balance. Well, they were lucky and hired a new employee, and that position now is gonna cause their overall appropriations to be above the ditto budget. So that was not known at mid-year, so it causes what you see before you, a budget transfer from Seventeen Eighty One to Budget Unit Twelve Thirty One, to cover those appropriations for the remainder of the year.
And that concludes your presentation?
That does conclude.
Any questions to Mr. Carter? So I just want to make a quick comment for the first one. The fact that we're doing that much more in our tax auctions is exactly the process that we've been looking to enhance, and so happy to supply the necessary funds in order to continue that activity. I know that we signed some contracts with some of the companies that help us through that process, and each property does cost a certain amount. And so this, this is, to me, that's, that's just good news of doing more work, and hopefully there's the return on that work from people purchasing those properties or paying off their properties, so we can get those more active. The rest is just part of our, as you suggested, is part of our classing comp that had occurred, and absolutely a necessary thing to make happen so that we can make sure and stay balanced. So this is pretty simple for me. Any further questions or comments before we open it up to the public? Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Anybody in the Zoom room have a comment on this item, six point four? Anybody in the board chambers have a comment? And let's bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to transfer in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from Budget Unit Seventeen Eighty One, Special Projects Account Seven Seventeen Point Five Five Dash Oh Seven, to Budget Unit Eleven Twenty Two, Treasurer Tax Collector Account Seven Eleven Point Twenty Three Dash Eighty, for services related to a second tax sale for FY twenty dash twenty-one, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall, and a second from Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to transfer in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from Budget Unit Seventeen Eighty One, Special Projects Account Seven Seventeen Dash Five Five Dash Oh Seven, to Budget Unit Twelve Thirty One, County Council Account Seven Twelve Point Oh One Dash Eleven, to cover permanent salaries through the end of the fiscal year, and authorize chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall, and a second from Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Are we ready for item six point five?
Yes, we are.
Perfect, thank you so much. So six point five, our nine fifty AM item, consideration of budget transfer from Budget Unit Seventeen Eighty One, Special Projects Account Seven Seventeen Dot Five Five Dash Oh Seven, to Budget Unit Sixteen Seventy One, Buildings and Grounds Account Seven Sixteen Dot Sixty One Dash Sixty, and new capital asset in the amount of sixty thousand dollars to correct deterioration to the pedestrian, bridgeway, and stairs on the south side of the courthouse, and authorize the chair to sign. And Cao Hutchinson, any comments?
Stephen will present this, and Lars is here as well to answer any questions you have about the project.
Okay, perfect. Mr. Carter?
Hello again, Board. So before I get too far into this one, I was notified by the department that sixty thousand isn't likely going to fully cover the expense. They wanted to increase it to eighty-five thousand, which is due to possible change orders and materials that could arise for the project. So the reason for the budget transfer is the recently identified, the, I can't speak, deterioration of the pedestrian, bridgeway, and it is not currently budgeted as a capital asset or in their current appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. We had planned on budgeting it for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, but the project has already started and likely will finish before June thirtieth. So to make sure that there are the correct appropriations and capital asset available to that department, we are presenting to you the budget transfer that will move appropriations again from Seventeen Eighty One to Budget Unit Sixteen Seventy One, to allow that project to proceed and complete timely. And Lars may want to make some other comments.
All right, good afternoon, Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. I will, yeah, just add some clarity to it. We were planning on, and had had included it in our budget submission for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two for this project. Because of the rapid deterioration, we elected to start that this year with with funds that we had appropriated in in our maintenance budget, Object Code Eighteen in sixteen seventy-one, Budget Unit Sixteen Seventy One. So that, just to clarify why we initiated the project, it might give the impression that we did not have the funding. We did have appropriations within Eighteen. We contacted the administrative office. It was going to, to really challenge us for the rest of the fiscal year for maintenance, so I appreciate the administration, administrative office's support of that. And then as far as the additional funding, yes, Stephen is correct. Sixty thousand is is very close to the the contract amount. However, the the overall project has other costs associated with it. Staff, staff time, which is not billable, but materials that staff will be applying, as well as some other welding inspections and other work that that needs to be done. We're increasing the number of structural welds, so there will be a change order associated with it for that. So hopefully, that clarifies some of it, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Director Ewing. Any questions or comments from board members?
No.
Okay, I think it's a good thing to have this be resolved earlier than later. I know I looked up when I was shown the staircase, and glad to see that we're getting a new one. So thank you very much for being on top of this. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Any public comments from the Zoom room on this item? Okay, and anybody in the board chambers? Let's bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the budget transfer from Budget Unit Seventeen Eighty One, Special Projects Account Seven One Seven Point Five Five Dash Zero Seven, to Budget Unit Sixteen Seventy One, for Building and Grounds Account Seven One Six Point Six One Dash Six Zero, and new capital asset in the amount of eighty-five thousand? Is that what the request was?
Correct.
Eighty-five thousand to correct deterioration of the pedestrian, walkway, and stairs on the south side of the courthouse, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, and a second from Supervisor Pyska. Roll call, please, Johanna.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And let's go ahead and pull some of these items that were pulled from the consent agenda. We'll start with five point two. Approve revised letter of support to Yolo County Flood Control and Water Conservation District revising the date of water diversion to June and July twenty twenty-one, and authorize the chair to sign. I did not want to pull this item to argue over the, what is happening and what is being requested of us. As you remember, I voted against this. I just want to not automatically put my yes vote on this. I still vote no, but I understand where we all sit, and you understand where I sit, and I feel no need to argue this. But I did want to pull that. So any comments before I open it up to the public? Okay. Did, Cao Hutchinson, did you want to speak on this at all? Okay.
No further comment.
And basically, it just moves the dates. That's the only thing that's really changing.
Yes.
Any public comment from the Zoom room on five point two? Okay, we have phone sixty-two oh five. Go ahead and unmute, please.
Good morning. I don't know if this is the proper time or place for this comment, but I wonder if you could review, please, to the public, what the diversion is by Yolo County, because, again, since today, there's new emphasis being spoken about, about the urgency of the drought conditions. I think it's imperative that everyone understand what water is going to be pulled from the lake.
Thank you very much for that. Originally, this was brought to us a couple weeks ago, a few weeks ago, speaking of an emergency use for a project that was occurring between Calpine and Sonoma County for their effluent pipeline coming up to the Calpine Center. That was for two hundred and fifty acre feet, I believe, and that was supposed to be for the month of May and June. Today, in front of us, it's not the approval of the usage of the water, it's the approval amendment of moving the dates. That is simply what is in front of us, so I do not believe that we are able to argue the original project. I'm looking at Ms. Grant to see if I'm correct.
Your board's made your decision as to the allotment of water, so...
This is just a timeline change amendment and nothing more.
That's right.
Thank you. And so that that is the best explanation I can offer, but thank you for the comment.
Thank you.
And let's go ahead and open it up for the public. And I know that we did receive something from the public about this. Did you want to speak on that right now? I'm just kind of making sure that you recognize we're on this topic.
You read the letter?
Yes.
Have you?
Okay, so thank you very much. We did receive a letter from a public member. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for consideration. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for consideration.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Revised Letter of Support for Yolo County Flood Control, Water Conservation District, revising the date of water diversion to June and July 2021, and authorize the Chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon and I'm going to give this one to Supervisor Pisca. I don't know, it was a tie. And the second from Supervisor Pisca. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Nay.
Thank you.
And next was, I believe, 5.9. This one was just a quick fix. 5.9a, approve rental agreement between the County of Lake and Paul E. Lowen and Kevin Soto for storage hangar number one at Lamson Field for the monthly amount of $300, and authorize the Chair to sign. And b, approve the rental agreement between the County of Lake and Paul E. Lowen and Kevin Soto for storage hangar number two at Lamson Field for the monthly amount of $500, and authorize the Chair to sign. When reading through the Lamson Rental Agreement 1 in the memo and at the top of the rental agreement, it says $300, but within the agreement itself, the $500 slipped in. And so I spoke with Director De Leon and that is supposed to be $300. And that is the only reason that I pulled this item, making sure that Scott De Leon, if he is still on, has the ability to speak on this.
Mr. Chair, he's not on, but he did tell me he agrees with the change.
Okay, and so other than that, any further comments from the board? All right, let's open it up for the public. Any comments from the Zoom room? All right, and any comments from the board chambers? And let's bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Supervisors consent to the rental agreement with Paul E. Lowen and Kevin Soto and authorize the Chair to sign the attached agreements with the change of $300 in the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second from Supervisor, I'm drawing a blank, I'm so sorry. Simon, goodness gracious. Please, roll call, Johanna. Wow.
We've got to get the lunch.
Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye. That was slightly embarrassing there, I apologize. And then let's open up 5.16. Approve the distribution of excess proceeds in the amount of $331,723,002. No, I said that wrong. $331,723,02 from tax defaulted land sale number 156 held on June 9, 2018, per R and T Code 4675. And I don't know if we have Ms. Ringan with us.
We do, Mr. Chair. She is present, as is the Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector, Liz Martinez. They're both here.
Perfect. So I pulled this and I spoke with Barbara Ringan, our tax collector. There is one that says unclaimed under $150. It is item number 21, but the unclaimed amount is $163,98. From what she has told me, this did not go through the appropriate process to allow claims on this amount. And so I believe that she wants us to pull this out of the overall proceeds and she will have a new total for us to approve. Ms. Ringan.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you just fine.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so the new total, we will put that item number 21 in a pending status, pending the proper notification. So the adjustment to the spreadsheet, then the unclaimed will now be $184,644,86. There'll be a pending amount of $163,98. The claim for amount of $331,723,02 for claims that have been approved is still a correct amount. So the amount that will change is the unclaimed by the $163,98.
Thank you very much for that. Quick question, with the new process that will take place for that, do they have a full year? Is that the process?
At this point, I believe so, but I don't have a definitive answer on that yet. But I believe so.
All right, thank you very much. Any further comments? All right, and I'm sorry, Ms. Ringan, just want to make sure and check in. Were you complete with your presentation or with your comments?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public in the Zoom room. Any comments on 5.16? Okay, let's go ahead and see if there's any public comments in the board chambers. And let's bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the distribution of excess proceeds in the amount of $331,723,02 from tax defaulted land sale number 156 held on June 9, 2018, per R and T 4675.
With amendments?
Yes, with amendments. I just figured that since the amount didn't change, but in the document it changed, right? With amendments, yeah.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall and Supervisor Simon. If we could please get a roll call, please.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and that completes our pulled items from the consent agenda as well as our timed items until a 1:30 p.m. item comes up. We are just in time to take a lunch. And I don't think that one will take that much time. All right, so let's go ahead and take up 7.2 before taking lunch. Consideration of a, waiving the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services. And b, approval of the agreement between the County of Lake and Crestwood Behavioral Health for adult residential support and specialty mental health services for fiscal year 2021, '22 for a contract maximum of $1.4 million, and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement. Director Metcalfe.
Yes, I promise not to take up too much of your time because I know we're all getting hungry, but. Hello, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Todd Metcalfe. I'm the Director of the Behavioral Services Department. So as Chair Sabatier explained, what you have before you is a contract with Crestwood Behavioral Health for next fiscal year to provide specialty mental health and medical services to our clients. As I have mentioned in some previous board meetings, and I know why this is being pulled or being discussed because of the formal bidding process. And again, I'm asking to waive that process because putting a contract of this nature out to bid would be detrimental to the clients residing in these types of facilities. And when I say detrimental, again, we're talking about people, not widgets. And further to that, the California State Department of Healthcare Services actually provides every mental health plan in the state of California with a list of approved facilities with whom we can contract. Crestwood is one of those facilities on that list. And not to mention, the other facilities that are on that list, we also contract with almost all of them. So even if we went out to bid, it's highly unlikely that anyone would respond because there is and has been for years, at least ever since I've been in this role, a state and nationwide shortage of psychiatric beds. It's been going on for quite some time. So in other words, there really are no other open beds available. And as County Council knows, per the Olmstead Act, we must place our folks in a facility as close to their home as possible. And thankfully, these Crestwood facilities are all located here in Northern California. So that's a good thing. And speaking to the clients that are placed in Crestwood facilities, all of them are LPS conservates. And I'm not sure if there's anyone here in this meeting right now that could represent the Public Guardians Office, but they may want to weigh on this as well. The importance of maintaining this contract with Crestwood because it is just so important for our clients to not be moved around from place to place. And as I said before, I do respect and get the formal bidding process, but I still say this type of contract falls under Lake County Code, Section 38.2, that makes this a quote-unquote "special services" contract, which makes it exempt from the formal bidding process. So therefore, I am asking for board approval of this. And Anita is going to probably scold me for this. I'm asking for board approval of this contract and all future contracts of this nature moving forward. And with that, I will stop because we're all hungry for.
Thank you, Director Metcalfe. Any comments from supervisors? And so I, while I appreciate the arguments made, I think the fact that there is a list, I think at one point we need to at least identify what does that list, what is the reaction from the list if we ask them versus just continuing? But I'm going to ask a favor of board members. If we can split A and B into two separate motions, because I support the agreement, I just don't support the waiving of the bid. And so I don't want to show that I'm not in support of what is happening at Behavioral Health. I absolutely support the services that are rendered over there and it is absolutely critical that those services be rendered to our community members who need the service. So if it's possible to split that so that I can share my support of the agreement, I would appreciate it. If not, it is what it is. And I need to open it to the public before we take action.
I want to make a comment.
Okay, please.
I just want to make a comment that I definitely agree with Director Metcalfe, that we are talking about people and opening this up to bid would be detrimental to move these people into another facility. So I definitely agree of waiving of the formal bidding process and to approve this contract.
Thank you for your comments. Any further comments? And was there a comment from Ms. Grant? I heard a button.
Just very briefly, there can't be a blanket waiver because both the board and the public have to consider each circumstance. It may be the same every time, but all your board needs is the explanation which you received today so that you can move forward and make your decision and approve a waiver.
Thank you very much. Any further comments before we open it up for the public? All right, let's go ahead and see if anybody in the Zoom room wishes to speak on this item. Seeing none, anybody from the public in the chambers wish to speak on this item? No one's rushing to the microphone, so let's bring it back here for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to unique nature, goods and services.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second from Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call please.
Supervisor Simon.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Nay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement between County of Lake and Crestwood Behavioral Health for adult residential support and specialty mental health services for fiscal year 2021, '22 for contract maximum of $1.4 million, and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second from Supervisor Pisca. Johanna, roll call please.
Supervisor Simon.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you Director Metcalfe for your patience for us to get to your item. So we are done with all of our items except for the last two timed items, which we will come back at 1:30 to start. We are going to take a lunch break and we will be taking our closed session after our afternoon items as well. So see everybody back here at 1:30 p.m. Thank you for everyone's patience. I know we said we would be back at 1:30. We wanted to make sure that everyone could be heard and seen as we progress into item 6.8. So again, welcome back, everyone. This is our 1:30 p.m. item, Public Hearing, Appeal of Vicious Animal Abatement, case number 859, located at 21852 Jerusalem Grade Lower Lake for Brandon Strauser. And because this is a public hearing, I want to make sure that all who will testify are sworn in. So if you are planning to speak today, let's go ahead and get sworn in and that includes staff as well.
Mr. Chair, it normally does not include legal counsel.
What was that?
I said it normally does not include legal counsel.
Correct.
Who will speak but not testify.
Correct.
Saying it for the animal owners' counsel.
Perfect. But for the counsel, we don't need it, but for you, we would if you're going to speak, yes. And Johanna, if we could please do the swearing in.
Okay, with your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, thank you very much, Johanna, and thank you for all who got up. And so I've already described the item in front of us today, so I am going to open it up for our Animal Control Director to get us started on this case.
Good afternoon, supervisors. Thank you. I'm Jonathan Armis. I'm the Director of Lake County Animal Care and Control. I want to start that we might have a disposition or an agreement with the dog owners that we've been speaking to today. But as a little refresher as what we're dealing with today, we have three dogs that were placed on a vicious abatement back in 2019. Their names were Ragnar, Faith and Sam. That was in September 19th and it was due to multiple attacks on animals, including deer, a horse and two goats. The animal owner, Brandon, has then since violated conditions 1 through 6 of the vicious abatement order by canceling his liability insurance three months after the abatement order. He removed the beware of dog signs on his property and he was failing to keep up on rabies vaccinations and licensing requirements. The kennels were altered in an unapproved manner and they allowed the dogs to run loose on their property. And they allowed the dogs to run loose off of their property. On May 14, 2021, we did receive complaints that both Ragnar and Faith had been loose and that they were attacking sheep. They had killed one and severely injured two others. The injuries sustained were so severe that those two sheep had to be humanely euthanized. When investigating this call, our officers went to the property and saw the dogs loose on their property themselves. Sam, the third dog in the vicious abatement, is still missing. We have notification as to his whereabouts. And at that, that concludes the conditions 1 through 6 that he violated. The agreement that we have come to is that the dogs could be redeemed by Tyra at a different property while following the same vicious abatement orders, but again, at a new property in Tyra's care and not Brandon's. And I'm sorry, Tyra is, she was also named on the vicious abatement originally. I don't know her relationship to Brandon, but we have dealt with her extensively through these cases.
Okay, and that concludes your presentation for us?
As I said, that that would be an agreement that we would come to if the board so chose. We can go through a full hearing and really go through all the details and have, like I said, everything heard out. I don't know if that is acceptable to the board.
So I know, I appreciate that you've been working with both the owner and those who know the dogs and the owner as well, trying to find some way to rectify this. Would you be able to be more specific as to what the rules and conditions would be for the new home for these animals?
So they would have to follow.
Hold on one second, Supervisor Simon.
The new location also.
Yes, and the new location as well.
I actually don't know where they would be relocated at this time. We would just ask that they wouldn't be at the property that they were before and that we would work with Tyra in getting that new location up to spec per se. So that would be something that we would have to constantly work with her. They wouldn't be released until that point. And then as far as the stipulations of the vicious abatement that would still hold, they would still need a written proof of public liability insurance for the animals and the tune of. and the tune of $50,000 for bodily injury or death as a result of them. They would need to have beware of dog signs on every side of the property that could be accessible to the public. They would need to keep current dog license and rabies vaccination, and the canines are already microchipped, but they would be transferred to Tyra's name. They would need to have a construction of a minimum sized 10-foot by 14-foot by 6-foot kennel with concrete flooring, a padlock to lock the gate, solid roof to provide shelter, and to confine the animals. And the kennel would also have to be screwed into the concrete flooring. They would be kept inside the kennels at all times, and they may not be loose on the property. They would only be allowed off property for necessary medical appointments, but at which time they will be muzzled and leashed and in control of a responsible adult, 18 or older. And they would be, have to be kept at whichever address that Tyra would be able to provide, and if ownership was to be transferred, they're supposed to notice, notify us within 10 days.
And, and these conditions need to be met prior to the current two animals that you have in your possession to be released?
They would have to be fulfilled before we would release them, yes.
Okay. And the third animal, you said you know the whereabouts of that third animal, or?
I do not know the whereabouts of that animal.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other questions from board members? I, I am very interested in what Supervisor Simon asked about the location, and I hope that Tyra, who did raise her hand and got sworn in, would be able to provide that for us. But I would suggest that in the conditions, that it cannot be on that same property.
On the same Jerusalem property? Yeah, that's where-
Because that would not make sense, just to get another person to take the animal and take possession, but then end up on the same property, that, that just doesn't seem-
Correct. The agreement would require that it would go to a new property, and it couldn't go there.
And is there any further questions before we move on to the appellate? Okay. And so if you want to come to the microphone and-
I'm here.
Provide any input, any information for us?
Like where I live?
If, if that's possible, I, I just want to make sure-
I can make these provisions for these dogs, because I do love them and I want to save their life. So whatever it takes that I need to do, I will do.
Okay. And you said that this property is out of county?
Yeah, I, I have, my house is out of county. I'm, I'm in Leightonville.
Okay. And, and I don't think there's a need for a specific address for us. I think that's a little too, too much detail, but out of county, I think is good enough for me, if that's okay with the rest of the board.
And that is where the dogs will be going?
Yes.
Okay. And you agree with this potential agreement as well?
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay. I appreciate that you had this communication and being able to come to an agreement. I think that makes it a whole lot easier than, we had a bit of a difficult task in front of us to make a decision for some animals too, so I think, yes, Supervisor Simon?
Do you have one more question?
Is your microphone on?
No, there you go, thank you. It wasn't. So as a previous question that I did ask, just to get on record, was I was asking if this house was out of the county, and you did respond, yes, thank you. I did have a question, just, Anita will tell me if it's not appropriate, but I did have a question, because I know there were three, there were three dogs. There are only two now, obviously, and no whereabouts, so I guess my question-
They're all live dogs.
The third one, if you had any idea where the third one may be, or?
No. I, you know. As far as he said, he got sick and died.
Just wanted to ask.
Okay. Any further questions? Supervisor Scott?
So just logistics, do we have to contact another county that we're moving these dogs there? So who would then be responsible? Would it be the other county or us? How does that work?
So what we would do is contact that county. Some counties may or may not have ordinances that restrict that type of movement. I don't know too many that do, but we would contact that county, and then we would inform them that we have a dog deemed vicious rehoming to their, their area. And then they would work with that dog owner and make sure that they're following the same provisions, and that designation will follow. Their requirements may be different than ours, so that would be something that we would work with them prior to release of the dogs.
Is there a way that they could reject this, or how does that work?
It, I believe by ordinance only, and if they have any type of ordinance in place already.
So that, then it would come back to us if they did reject the dogs moving there?
Correct.
Thank you.
And just for logistical reasons, and I appreciate Supervisor Scott's comments, it just kind of triggered another series of questions. Are you planning to do a check on that property via just photographs, a FaceTime walkthrough, or are you planning on actually going there yourself and checking it out, since it is out of county?
We would call that local agency, who would then do the appropriate checks, and they would then take care of the vicious abatement order on their county. It would be their required service to do, if that makes sense. So if, if an animal were to transfer into Lake County that has that designation, we would go out and inspect the properties, make sure everything's okay, and then keep that file on the dog, and be the ones responsible for handling that case appropriately.
Okay. So is it possible that we need to maybe not close down this case until we get the full approval from another county, so that we don't have to start this over, and, and maybe put a continuance on it until that has been signed off by the other county? I, I don't know, Ms. Grant would-
Yes, you're going to want to continue the, continue this matter while the details of this are being worked out. That way, the, both the department and the animal owner retain their rights to pursue this before your board.
Any other questions? All right, thank you for all the questions. Anything further from you? And I'm sorry, I don't have your last name, I know you as Tyra.
Matthews.
Okay, thank you very much. And other people were sworn in as well. Is there any other public comment on this item?
I will take a moment if I may.
If you can go to the microphone, please, thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Edward Savin, and I represent the interests of Brandon Strauser. And I really just want to give my appreciation to Animal Control and County Council for discussing this on several occasions, and coming to what I think is a fair and reasonable adjudication of it. That's all I want to say.
Thank you very much.
I'm a journalist advocate, and in this case, I am speaking for the animal. I called all morning to the fishing game. I learned that there is a test to find out the degree of wolf that these animals might have. If they only have 25% dog, they are considered wolves. I happened to be reading a book. This is a foremost, one of the foremost authorities on wolves, both negative and positive. This animal has been called a husky dog, a wolf dog, a hybrid. And this man on 19, he said the wolf's tail was longer and had no tendency to curl over its back, as the malamutes did. The malamute is a dog from Alaska. He's bigger than the Siberian husky. I believe they both have dogs that curl up over their backs. I want to point out that this dog did kill. He got out of his fence, and I want to say that he acted like a wild predator. The wolf is a predator. I am urging that the wolf's rights be upheld, and he be tested to find out if he is, in fact, legally a wolf. I can't think of anything worse than being in an enclosure with a concrete floor and a wire fence for these animals, if they are, in fact, predators. And if you look at the picture of the animal in your materials, you will see that his tail does go down. His tail does not curl up. I also want to say quite fairly that his face is like a dog's face, it's not as long as a wolf's face. I just want to speak to make sure that you are doing the right thing by this animal who has escaped and killed twice. Thank you.
Thank you. So I see no further public comment in the room. We do have a hand up from Glow Anderson in the Zoom room, if we can make sure to unmute Glow.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I'm Glow Anderson, I'm a neighbor out here. I turned in, I was one of the neighbors who turned in the attack on the sheep, because this has happened before. Since 2018, we've been, had to deal with these dogs attacking our livestock. And having the owner take no responsibility, he was given the abatement, and he still has allowed his dogs to run loose. And I just want to thank Animal Control, Care and Control to, you know, they're trying to work out a problem. I'm just hoping that this is a possible solution, and that, yes, if it's continued, that'd be fine. The dogs are still under lock and key, that'd be great. Also, I just want us to be safe out here, I want our livestock safe. And I just don't want, well, I don't want to see them dead out here, just because they're killing livestock and they, they can't be controlled. It's in their nature at this point. Once they start, it's hard for them to stop. And I feel that prevention is much better than the cure. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
And I also submitted the map, so that you could see how far they travel. It's just not around where they live. They go several parcels out, past me. So, yes, this is a very serious situation.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And I see no further comment in the Zoom room. We seem to have another comment in the board chambers. Could you make it 30 seconds? Please.
I want to put in a good word for Jonathan, who gave me a tour of his facilities. It was very clean, and the animals were very happy though. Thank you. I did not get to see the animal in question, but Jonathan was very friendly and very understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have another hand up, Gabriel O'Neill?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. I am the, okay, good. I am the immediate neighbor of Brandon Strauser, and so I'm very well aware, and we were the first people to make contact with one of his dogs in 2018, which was the mother of the current dogs. So my concern is that one of the dogs, Sam, is obviously still unaccounted for, and I cannot help but have this suspicion that he may have been tucked away to evade the relocation. So I'm going to keep my eyes open for Sam to be showing up here again, and I just want you to know that. And if he does show up here again, you will hear from me. I am happy that a new home has been found for the dogs, because I don't want to see those dogs dead either. But I don't, but I definitely want them gone from this neighborhood. That's all I have to say about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close public comment and bring this back. I, I do have a question, since the original case does have the three animals. If the, is there a time period that you might leave open the case for that third animal? Or is this going to terminate the case with the, if the agreement goes through, and then you'll start over if that third animal shows up? What, what's your process right now?
The, Sam would still be designated as a vicious animal, so if he were to return, he is required to notify us. If he rehomed it, he was supposed to be required to notify us that. I had gotten the same notification that he said the animal had died when I questioned where Sam was in this case. I have not been able to verify that.
I don't believe that.
Okay. Thank you very much for the response. And Jake, if you're here with us, if we can make sure and mute those that have completed their public speaking. Again, back to the board, any comments or questions, or ready for action?
I, I do think those questions were asked before, and I think County Council, Anita, it is going to stay open. Obviously, whatever we decide today, it will stay open, we have that opportunity. So I wanted to let the folks know on the phone that at least the final public comment on this, or testimony on this, is that it will be open.
Yes. Okay. And do want to thank again Animal Control and County Council, working with the appellant and figuring out something. And let's hope that that comes through, and, and hope that the county they're going to will work with us to make that possible. So, do we need a consensus or a motion to continue, or is consensus good enough?
I would do that by motion. I think that you may want to select a, a further hearing date, so it does not go on forever.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll ask Animal Control Director, Director Armis, what is a timeline that you think is adequate to give you time to get this accomplished with the neighboring county?
I'll work, I could, I could contact the neighboring county immediately, and I can get word back about the feasibility. Then the question remains is how long it may take for Tyra to, to complete those actions, and that would be the longest portion. I could theoretically have word by next week about the feasibility, feasibility of the animals relocating.
Ms. Grant?
So in terms of, in terms of the actual requirements that are going to have to be in place, then what, 45, 60 days would be? And obviously, the hearing could occur earlier, if there was time on the calendar, if something needed to come back to your board. But if you have a hearing date where it will be heard, no later than this date, at least then there's going to be a timeline that the parties can work against.
Okay. And it makes another question come up in my mind. Typically, there is a fee for holding an animal in our shelter. Who is paying for that fee in order to accomplish this potential timeline?
Brandon would.
Okay. And has there been any payments received from Mr. Strauser?
Not at this time. It would be due on, it would be due on redemption.
Okay. Okay. What do you guys think about offering 30 days, so that we can get at least an update, and if we need to continue from there, we do that? Or would you rather, I, I, I don't want to put them on the, on next week, just in case that you don't get a response right away, but I also don't want to give you too little time, too much time either. Want to make sure that this moves forward. I'm kind of looking at Supervisor Simon.
I know this is a ways out there, but I just think there's going to be some coordination things that take time. I think that like the 60-day timeframe is realistic. I was just looking at, obviously, August 3rd, we have a lot going on, but maybe the August 10th meeting, just, just a suggestion.
Yes.
Okay. That sounds good. And so if somebody wants to make a motion, continue this, and same time, 1:30 PM as this?
Johanna, you don't see any conflict on the calendar for June, excuse me, August 10th? Just want to be sure.
No, you're fine.
Thank you.
Okay, so-
Mr. Chair, the, the parties could always ask for an item on the agenda to approve any final stipulation if all the conditions are meant before that date.
Okay. Good. Thank you for that.
Want to make sure we had adequate, adequate time. Okay, so I will move to continue this hearing to a date certain, August 10th at 1:30 PM. Okay, so I will move to continue this hearing to a date certain, August 10th at 1:30 PM.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second from Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we still have a little bit of time before 2:30. Let's go ahead and start our calendars and we'll start with Supervisor Simon.
Thank you both. Board meeting today. Carol, did I see an email today? Do we have something after today's meeting?
After today, we don't.
Okay, all right.
One less thing to do.
Yeah. I thought I saw an email or something.
Friday. On Friday, we do.
We do? What do we have Friday?
Okay, BOs meeting today. Obviously tomorrow, Board of Supervisors budget meeting. Thursday, you do have a couple of conflicting meetings. I have the South Deal Committee meeting and also the Geothermal Advisory Committee meeting. I'm going to have to work those schedules out in the future because they seem to be overlapping. Thursday night have the math, Middletown Area Town Hall. Friday morning have the drought ELC call in the morning. And then what time did you say we had something on Friday?
I don't have something on Friday.
Oh.
Do you Supervisor?
I saw the email.
Are you referring to the meeting with the consultant? It's, looks like it's going to be Thursday at 8:30?
Okay.
Will that work for you too?
Thursday, 8:30.
I'll get that forward to you.
Okay.
Knew we had something there. And then obviously Monday, a big day. We have the community director introduction and working on that. And then back here on Tuesday for the board meeting.
Okay. And Supervisor Crandall?
So tomorrow is the budget hearings. Thursday, South Deal. You said that right, Supervisor Simon? Okay. South Deal. Friday, I have an open day for like office or constituent issues that I'll probably take advantage of. And then Monday, I have something with one of my North Shore neighborhood meetings about an initiative that they want to bring forward for their area. And then back here Tuesday for Board of Supervisors.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Scott?
Tomorrow, budget hearings. On Thursday, I'll be heading to a graduation, Thursday and Friday. And then Saturday, I'll be participating with my family with the Hike for Hospice. So I said it'd be good if all of us got out there and supported our Lake County Hospice. They do some great work for our community. And on Monday, I have a Hope Rising meeting at 8:30 and then an audit committee meeting at 2:00 and then back here on Tuesday, the 15th.
Thank you very much. And Supervisor Pyska? I'll try to start in reverse next time from five down to one instead of one to five.
It's fine with me. I did want to just share one thing that came to my attention yesterday. The Conacte Senior Support is a nonprofit that serves all of our county seniors all around our county. They have two programs. They have the Friendly Visitor Program, which people 20 years or older can go and visit homebound seniors. And there's also the Senior Peer Counseling Program, which if you're 55 and older, you can go through a training and they can go and visit and offer support to homebound seniors. The Conacte Senior Support Group is looking for board members. And as I mentioned, it serves the whole county. So I was speaking with the director yesterday and I mentioned I could bring it up to you. And so you may hear from Francois Van Veck about that opportunity. If you have people in your community that would be willing to serve on a board, meet once a month for about an hour and then maybe a little bit of outreach with the two programs. So it's really beneficial, especially now when our senior centers are closed and they'll likely be closed for a little while. So just keep that in mind and hopefully you'll hear from Francois. And if you don't and you have some suggestions, feel free to reach out to me. And then, so tomorrow, there's budget hearings. There's also Kelseyville Fire Protection is having another Zoom about their measure. If anyone's interested in attending that, you can look at Civic Mike slash Kelseyville. Thursday, we will have a meeting at 8:30 with the consultant preparing for next week. I have the Fire Safety Council. I have the geothermal fund meeting. The American Rescue Plan Idea Exchange. Is it a webinar?
Yeah, it's exchanging of ideas of how it's going to be, how those funds will be used.
Yes, so I'm hoping that I can attend that.
We have staff planning to attend that in case you don't. And I've instructed people to please take notes.
Okay, wonderful. I'm, I'd like to attend it. I'm pretty sure I can. It's a busy day. And then sixth grade promotion for my daughter from Cobb School is in the evening. Friday is, I'm going to be working with Michelle Scully on her new podcast. So that's going to be exciting. And then on the 14th, 8:00 AM, starting our community development transition with management partners. Then my meeting with Carol later on that morning. That's, that's all I've got.
All right. Thank you very much. I want to bring up a couple of things that I've done over the past couple of weeks. We had a break because of Memorial Day weekend. Actually, number one, I joined Supervisor Simon in Lower Lake for Memorial Day weekend. That was an amazing festivity to kind of bring us back together as a community. I thought that the Lower Lake Community Action Group did a really fabulous job of reorganizing and creating more of a street fair than trying to pack a small park, which usually is perfectly intimate. But with COVID-19, I think it was really the best decision ever to put us out on the street rather than all meet, and I believe it's Rustiki Park? Is that the actual name? Yeah. So kudos to them and I thought it was a beautiful day. Then we met with LTA and APC last week. And just want to let you know, Lake Transit Authority has definitely struggled throughout the pandemic. I think that they've done a fantastic job. They were offering free bus fares, continuing their free college fares for those that are students of our community colleges. And they've had to unfortunately, over the course of the pandemic, shut down certain routes. I believe by the end of this month, all of those routes should be back and functioning. And so really happy to see that we're kind of moving out and slowly going back to some normalcy. And I know that there's some other things that will be coming from LTA, some shifts in some of the routes, but those won't be put out until they're finalized. But very thankful for the LTA staff for doing what they can and very thankful to the drivers as well that they, they're, it's a very intimate interaction with all of the bus riders, an enclosed environment. And they've done a fabulous job throughout this whole entire pandemic to keep that system going, to get people from point A to point B. Also met to get prepared for the conversation that we're having in about 15 minutes. I did meet with some of our top vineyard growers and learned a lot. And I think that part of the discussion was more along the lines of the differences between vineyards and cannabis. And I think that we all learned a lot from each other from listening. It was appreciated that Brenna Sullivan from our Lake County Farm Bureau had put this together for me to have those discussions. And they kind of helped steer me in where it is that we may need to be as we deal with this drought and as we deal with, we are an agricultural county and we need to figure out how to make sure that it can remain that way for the future to come and not just today. And so very appreciative of the insights and feedback that I received. There was another meeting that I wanted to quickly, yes, yesterday.
Middle Creek, yeah.
Yesterday. Yesterday, as you all know, we brought to you an update on the Middle Creek Restoration Project. We were very concerned about our deadline of March 31st, 2022, that is coming up for using the rest of the funds that Department of Water Resources provided to us. It was $15 million, of which $9 million was available for acquisition of properties inside the Middle Creek area. There's been work going on since the very beginning of when we received those funds, but unfortunately, work has been slow and steady. We're gaining momentum, but COVID-19 also definitely has been a hurdle for us. For example, you remember back in October, we fronted some money to help purchase a piece of property because the market was going so fast and we were really focused on getting the residential properties done first. We just got paid back and reimbursed by the state a couple of weeks ago for that, that money that we fronted to make that possible. So obviously, there's some delays at the state level. We've had delays in some of our appraisals because we couldn't send out the appraisers during duck hunting season in an area where people were duck hunting. So there's, there's definitely been some setbacks. And so we gave that report to you about two weeks ago. And yesterday, we met with Assembly Member Cecilia Aguirre Curry, as well as Chief of Staff from Mike McGuire's office, Senator McGuire. He was not available as he was on the Senate floor. But we had a very positive interaction, very positive conversation about what are the options on the table to extend the deadline? What are some of the options to jump ahead of the game so that we can get these properties acquired and really move forward with this project? We hope to be in contact with them over the course of the next couple of weeks as they do their own research and have conversations with Department of Water Resources. And so I know that Supervisor Crandall was in on this meeting with us, as well as Director DeLeon and Deputy Director Marina Delagianis. Very pleased with the result of the conversation, very pleased with the feedback that we received and feeling very optimistic that we're going to be able to figure this one out and not find ourselves with a barrier or an obstacle that we can't overcome. So that was exciting. I see, obviously, we will be here with budget hearings tomorrow, probably one of the most important meetings that we'll have in the year. I know there's the potential of it going over into Thursday and we'll have to see. And I believe, not sure if it's been, if it's already on the agenda to be stated that way, but if we do continue on to the Thursday, the 10th, it will be online only due to the limitations of having a planning commission meeting here in the chamber. So the 9th will be here in the chamber as well as on Zoom. And if it continues on to the 10th, we will only be on Zoom.
It's staff's hope that.
It's staff's hope that we'll really finish it up tomorrow, even if it is a long day because I think it's confusing to the public to have the first day in two formats and the second day in only one. I just think that's, it's, people might misunderstand that. So we're prepared for a long day.
That's right. I forgot we prepared, we're prepared for dinner.
Yeah.
And actually, tomorrow is one of the exciting parts of being a chair. I am going to represent Lake County. And Congressman Mike Thompson will be coming in at around 3 o'clock to present us with our first half of our American Rescue Plan check. I hope it's a big check and not just a little check. It'll be so much more exciting. And so we will be receiving that and then we will continue our conversations on how to spend that money and how to bring that back to the Board of Supervisors for approval. Then I have a CSAC update on COVID-19, which is basically ramping down. The only information I can provide, which is basically very public information, is on June 15th, yes, all the restrictions drop from the tiered system, but the state of emergency still persists until further notice. We'll be joining a community barbecue in the city of Clear Lake where there's been some, some constituents have created their own group and have been very proactive in alerting the city of Clear Lake on some of their issues in the area that they're trying to rectify. And so they're inviting not only the city council, but also the rest of the community and myself included to join them and to be with them on more than just a work situation, trying to rectify their community problem and just actually be part of that community. Looking forward to that. Again, on Monday, we have a CSAC call update, meeting with our CAO to prepare for our 15th meeting, a pegboard meeting at the end of the day. And then back here on Tuesday. I don't have an agenda review yet on my calendar, but I'm sure that that will come up sometime later this week, probably post-budget is what I'm guessing. And that is my report. It is 2:19 right now. We're going to take a 10-minute break as I don't think any of our items in closed session can be finalized in less than 10 minutes. And I'm looking at our CAO. Yeah, I didn't think so. So we'll take a 10-minute break and at 2:30, we will have our final open session discussion. All right, we got 2:30 PM. And we have our full board here. Okay. So let's go ahead and get started. And Jake, if you can hear me, I sent you a, it looks like you received it. So just a quick PowerPoint presentation to at least help and guide the conversation. Item 6.9, 2:30 PM, discussion on drought-related issues. And I would say they're concerns and issues. A, how to handle future ag projects. B, how to handle water trucks. C, how to deal with illegal cannabis. I think we should really take these one at a time since they can be quite large topics. And so I want to start off with item A, how to handle future ag projects. And when I say future, I just mean temporarily during the drought on how to ensure that we have water. We have a lot of people, approximately, no, I'm not going to say the right number, but we have a large number of people that rely on wells throughout our county. And whether they rely on those wells for agricultural reasons, commercial reasons or residential reasons, we need to ensure that everyone continues to have efficient access to water. It is important that they do so. And right now, we are in what somebody just described earlier and very true, an exceptional drought in the state of California. We do anticipate a little bit of rain possibly next week. I'm very surprised and I'll be happy if I even see it. We'll see what happens. But the fact is, until late fall, early winter, we do not anticipate this status to change. And so we have to look carefully on what are we doing with our new projects coming in? And so I had a sit-down conversation. I've spoken both with the two major moving industries, cannabis and vineyards. And I wanted to come here today with a more specific ask. And I think that we need to have a discussion and really hammer out what do we want to do with our new ag projects? So if somebody comes in today and submits an application, do they get told, no, we don't take new applications? Do they get told, here, please sign this so that allows us to slow down the process? Or do we just stay the course? My suggestion is that we look at doing a waiver from the Streamline Permitting Act. If you submit an application, you would sign the waiver. This allows us to bypass where right now, 30 days, you automat, if we don't tell you that there's any deficiencies in your application, you would automatically have your application completed. And then we have to continue following the Streamline Permitting Act when it comes to all the sequel aspect as well. This would allow us to not bypass it entirely. There's still limitations and restrictions, but it would allow us to extend those timelines further. And it would slow down our projects. It would slow down the process. And I think that we need to take the time and while it slows down to do two things. One, we've already discussed it before. We want to revise the cannabis ordinance. There's some things that need to be changed from there. We need to realign with what the state did because we came out with our ordinance before the state came out with their, their latest revision. We need to make sure to realign that. And maybe there's other things that we need to change on there, which I don't really want to discuss that at length because this is not the subject matter, but there's things to revise. At the same time, I think that this is the most important part. I would like to request that the Ag Advisory Committee that was created by Supervisor Scott and Supervisor Pyska, that they work on a water sustainability ordinance. I feel that we do not have the precautionary ordinances in place to ensure that all projects in the future are going to also ensure that all current projects can ensure that all current projects continue to be successful, not projects, but residences, everyone else who has access to water, continues to have that level of access. If you're doing something on Big Valley, for instance, we keep track of that data really well. We have been for the past decades and decades. But we're starting to plant things in places that we've never planted before, and we need to better understand what's happening under the soil and the, the well reports are only a well report for that specific property and that specific well. It doesn't provide us a cumulative impact of water on the area when we're getting these new projects. I think it's very possible for these new projects to come here and not have a negative impact. But we also don't have the level of reporting that assures us that there's not going to be that negative impact. And I'm not looking for cannabis here. I'm looking for all projects. Residentials are going to use more water. Commercial is going to use more water. And any ag is going to use more water, and we need to be mindful about the fact that there's a limitation on what's underneath our ground. And so those are the things that I think we should look at in order to handle the new ag projects. I say new ag projects because I feel that it's not possible at this moment in time to just say, stop, no more. You've spent three years working on an application. You spent one year on your application and today we're just going to cancel you. I, I, I fear that that would have a negative impact on us having to deal with stumbling those applications, no matter what the type of ag that they are trying to do. I do have a plan on how to help with that. I'm going to bring that to the board hopefully next week for the current applications. But this is the subject matter of this about ag projects and future ag projects, and it's all in the idea of how long is this drought? Is this going to be a five-year drought, a ten-year drought, or is it just going to be six months and by next winter, we're going to have more than enough water and we'll be flooding again? It's hard to tell. It's a crystal ball situation. But I do believe in climate change. Whether or not it's man-made, who cares? The fact is, the trends are showing it's getting warmer. Our firefighters are telling us fire season is extended by sixty-five to seventy-five days. The fact of the matter is, we are getting more and more droughts and we are going to get longer droughts. And we need to be better prepared with ordinances that protect everybody here in Lake County. And so that is the discussion that I would like to offer to see where we want to go with it. I know it is a tough subject matter for the fact that it is such an important part of our community when it comes to ag. But at the same time, water, nothing can happen without water. And so I think that we need to really focus on this is about the drought and this is about water conservation. And how do we move forward rather than just staying the course, which I feel is detrimental to our future? And so opening it up for discussion to the board. Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, I, I forgot to mention it wasn't on my calendar because I'm not able to attend, but Monday is the Ag Advisory Committee. And I know you've been working with some of the members on that committee on this. And if they're in attendance this afternoon, I'd like to hear from them.
And I believe that some are here. I just need to. And I know we have, and, and let's go ahead and first maybe finish with the Board of Supervisors and then we can get to the ag advisory. And I do see that one of them already has their hand up. Any further comments from supervisors? Supervisor Simon?
Obviously, appreciate the conversation. You know, it's a very, it's a very touching one, obviously. When we talk about, you know, obviously, we're ag support county. I mean, you get that on your tax bill. That's what we're pushing for. So when we talk about monitoring or slowing down, you, you know, I really, I guess the first word you use is monitoring. I think there's some opportunities we could have with ag projects, whatever ag coming in, you know, the conversation is always when we come to these things, well, what was the water analysis done on the project? You know, where are those, you know, what is that happening? I'm not sure if there's any requirements currently for vineyards. Maybe there is, you know, I don't work with them, you know, as much as possible. And not a lot of big projects have come to this board since I've sat here. So I think those are some of the conversations. But on the other side of that is, you know, we went through it a whole year of it with the pandemic, being told what to do and other things like that from government is a real challenge, especially if you go out and you purchase property and you're looking to do projects that meet those zoning requirements. You know, that, you know, we have to look at it both ways. And ultimately, here in Lake County, you know, we are challenged all over the place. Someplace just, you know, that have plenty of water, groundwater, you know, some of us ain't around the lake, but then there's plenty of homes that are built in places that have forever been going dry during their, during the year where they got to ship water just to do these. And there are ag, you know, obviously, ag areas in there, most of them, ag areas outside of the community growth, growth boundaries, especially down in South County. You know, it's all ag, you know, it's on ag under the Williamson Act and other things. So protecting those is going to be a challenge. So I think each year or every time, depending what the circumstance is, the conversation comes up, but it is it's going to be a real challenge. So appreciate the conversation. Don't have any real easy answers besides, I'd like to see where the rest of the discussion goes with the board. Because ultimately, we live in an ag community and we've got to figure out how we move forward with that.
And you obviously understand then my pain of bringing a specific solution rather than offering the, the conversation because I was very nervous about some of the specific solutions that I had in mind and eventually was steered to more of a middle ground solution to see if that would be something worthy of looking into. Supervisor Pyska? No?
I was going to say that, yeah, thanks. This template, this is a template we're going to try to craft and, and make our own with, which you brought, which you put on here, this, this ordinance that was from Siskiyou County?
Uh, no, that one is for the truck, which was, would be part B.
Oh, that'd be part B, okay. Now, the discussion as a whole, I just was looking at it because there's a lot of different things that I, in general, when it comes to water, you know, there's different situations where there's illegal grows and people are taking water from many different areas, not just, you know, from the wells and whatnot, but also the situation with taking out, like I'll, I'll speak specifically about like Spring Valley where they're taking from rivers and, and creeks and things like that. And so we're, especially being on the situation with Lake Phil's Berry where we're talking about water and how it's a recharge system and all of that, how important that situation is even pre-drought discussion. Knowing that that's a big water source is very important and I'm glad that we're coming together and putting something on our agenda to put water as a main focus and the resource to ensure we're frugal with it and we're doing the right things. So.
Thank you. And I can't see if Supervisor Scott has anything. I got too many windows open trying to look at all participants.
I don't have any questions, but this is definitely, you know, a discussion that we need to have. It's a very touchy one because as Supervisor Simon pointed out, we, we are an ag community. So this, I, I'm, I'm glad that you brought this, this discussion to the board.
And I will respectfully offer rebuttal to, to that specific comment, both from Supervisor Simon and Supervisor Scott. If we allowed ag to just continue as is without really looking at the cumulative impact, I think that eventually we're offering a potential failure to some of the ag that we have here. And, and that, that's my personal opinion based on the fact that it, it's a limited resource of what we can give to industries in order for them to be successful. Because it is taking water from underneath us in order to make that be successful, and there's only a certain amount. So I, I think we can do both. I think we can both be cautious about water use and supportive of ag. I don't think it's a binary choice. I think that it can come together. And it might be difficult to, to figure out exactly where that balance is, but I think it's, it's a a requirement for continued success in the future. And I see, let's go ahead and, and move on to Sharon.
We're coming on, on, you know, the last two items too. And I, and I do think that the, the ag committee that was set up would be a good you know, a good spot to have, you know, some type of conversation about how we move forward, whether or not it ends up in an ordinance or, you know, just some suggestions from that committee, I think is great. And obviously with cannabis ordinance, you know, I've talked about it a few times. You know, I liked the process that we were able to go through when we were doing it. We had six workshops where we worked through it. It wasn't kind of a a piecemeal thing. We went through it. We, we got the cultivation stuff completed. And obviously, I think that's the direction we should go with that. So those last two, definitely agree with those.
Thank you. And so we were talking about the Ag Advisory Committee and I see that Sharon Zoller is here. If we can get her unmuted. Please.
Am I, am I there?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, thank you for bringing this conversation forward. And currently, I'm the Chair of the Ag Advisor Committee. And as Jessica mentioned, we're having a meeting on Monday. So we can add this to the agenda to begin the conversation. One of the things that would certainly help us is some of your definitions when you say ag projects. Was there a particular incident or event that, that triggered bringing this forth besides the fact that it's a drought? And so that would help us in our conversation. And you mentioned two crops on here, grapes and cannabis. I don't know much about growing cannabis, but I do about grapes and, and I know that when a vineyard is planted, the water source is designated. And so it, it's a very monitored situation as far as where the water comes from and how much is used. So in the conversation, we'd have to run through and make definitions of, you know, what crops we're talking about. Each crop needs a different amount of water at various stages during its growth period. Certainly, annual crops are different from the, from the trees and the vines that are in there for, you know, many, many years. So I think that we could have that conversation at the Ag Advisor Committee. Maybe come up with some, some perspectives, some components, some ideas. And perhaps we don't need an ordinance. Maybe there's some things already in place, which I don't know. That would be one of the questions that could answer some of the questions that may be sitting out there that brought this particular idea forward.
And, and just to respond as to where the idea comes from, a part B is also a part of my reason for having this conversation. Number one, obviously, it's the drought. And number two, there, there is a lot of trucking going on to both cannabis and other types of agricultural crops. And we're finding out that that is not being done in a very legal way. And we'll discuss that a little bit further as we get to item B. But that was two of my primary reasons for bringing this. I think that we just need to be wary. This, this is not going to be the first time, and this is definitely not going to be the last time that we deal with the drought. And I've had too many, too many folks who are contacting me about wells having problems and yes, there are outlined problems as to why water is, is going dry in certain areas, but as a whole, we all need to be mindful that we all need to live together and share this resource because it does not stop at the end of the property line. And so that, that was.
Right, no, no, absolutely. And you know, the, the old saying, whiskeys were drinking, waters were fighting. We, we want to try to avoid that.
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have Betsy Khan.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you for bringing this up. Supervisor Sabatier, I would like to mention a couple of things that may, you may already be aware of, but I want to raise those to the attention of everyone. First of all, you know, we have a Lake County water inventory that was done a number of years ago. We do have a groundwater management ordinance. But I think you will find that if you review that ordinance, it is deeply enforceable. Part of that ordinance prevents the extraction of local groundwater for export outside of the county. There is no monitoring of groundwater extraction for agricultural practices other than those used by the agricultural operator for their own purposes. In other words, there's no state requirement and there's no county requirement. And most importantly, the county does not manage, does not maintain the calculation of what LAFCO calls a safe yield calculation. This would prevent the over in competing permit projects. So until we have a realistic estimate and monitoring of permitted uses that says this is how much the groundwater basin holds on an average basis, and if you add three more agricultural operations, it will start to impinge on the water basin, you have no control. So there are things that the Water Department and the Planning Department and the Board of Supervisors need to take into consideration. And these are all well within the existing ordinances that you have. In addition, the state has introduced the new Sustainable Groundwater Management Program, which you know, has designated Big Valley as a moderately impaired groundwater basin. And there is a program for, you know, collecting more data in that area for agricultural purposes. But I can tell you that only one groundwater basin management agency has been monitoring its recharge area around the basin that it controls. And that is in Upper Lake. In Scotts Valley, we have a nearly defunct Scotts Valley Water Conservation District that needs to be supported by the Board of Supervisors and is not functional at this point. But that is very important for the protection of that groundwater basin. So these are all things I just offering to you to, to consider as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Brenna Sullivan.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. This is Brenna Sullivan with the Lake County Farm Bureau. So first, I want to thank Supervisor Sabatier for a meeting with ag stakeholders to discuss the drought. It's likely to be an ongoing issue in California. So we need to think carefully and deliberately about long-term solutions that will actually be effective, but won't cause unintended negative consequences. So for an example, an emergency-based development moratorium would only delay multi-year projects in the short term of, say, a forty-five or ninety-day window. It wouldn't actually save any water within that timeline. It would just delay the start of months or years-long processes down the road. In the meantime, it would create negative consequences for an industry that relies on marketing and is an essential piece of Lake County's economic resiliency. So we suggest addressing this issue with a long-term solution and make it process or science-based. So during the grading and sequo process, developers are required to provide hydrology reports, which define impacts on the local groundwater system. So tightening the threshold on what is considered acceptable groundwater impacts during drought conditions could be an example of a data or process-based solution that is based on actual conditions that would also address natural variability of groundwater within our region. It would tighten or slow development in drought conditions, but it wouldn't necessarily create a negative regional stigma against our ag industry. So specifically, we urge you to consider a couple of suggestions. Either create an ad hoc committee of all development stakeholders, not just ag, but it would include agriculture, cannabis, as well as residential and commercial developers to bring forward process or database solutions like the one mentioned above to address acceptable thresholds that need to be met for development during drought. Or as Supervisor Sabatier and Supervisor Pyska suggested, push this on to the newly created Ag Advisory Committee and charge this group with the same task. And this will ensure that any solution is thoughtful, impactful, and will not cause unintended consequences. And it's also essential for avoiding the same conversation during the next bad drought year. So thanks for your consideration of these suggestions and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We have Sarah Pistone.
Hi.
Hi. I also wanted to thank for bringing up this discussion. I'm a Lake County resident, and I work as an independent consultant, plan, prepare primarily for vineyard applicants. I work both in Lake and Napa County. And so I wanted to speak just briefly to the process that I have had to undergo for my client applicants. And the standard operating procedure in Lake County for all of the permits that I submitted, it had to include a regional analysis of groundwater and analyze water availability. And that I'm learning now may not have been clearly written into the requirements for all ag projects, but it was a due diligence step that was completed. And no application that I submitted was approved without having a site-specific report that did review all of the regional conditions, both in terms of existing and future land uses, recharge areas, topography, and then any publicly available well data. And so it seems like that might be the type of study that could be more formally required in the procedure. And then the due diligence is done upfront. Obviously, geology and groundwater science is highly variable, especially in volcanic areas. And I found through the reports that have come in for my clients very, very productive water reservoirs in certain parks of the county. And obviously, other parks of the county have water reservoirs that are more strapped. And then just with the analogy of Napa County, they do some site-specific studies, some of which have already been identified with the Big Valley groundwater use area that was mentioned already. And so the idea of identifying water-deficient zones might be a possibility. And then having different criteria based on different areas of the county that have already shown stress in groundwater production.
Thank you very much. We have Sean Connell.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Hello.
Yeah, my name is Sean Connell, District Four. I just want to touch on the first section of what we're talking about here and how we are going to handle future ag projects. It seems to me that there's been a lot of discussion with the influx of permits at the Community Development Department. And I think my big question is, how many use permits are agricultural projects required to go through? I don't believe that they are required to have a use permit, which means that they don't get nearly the SEQA analysis that the standard cannabis planner, you know, applicants do. Cannabis cultivation is regulated quite heavily in the state, both at the water board level as well as at the local level, where a well test and a meter is required to be put onto your production well for consistent and constant monitoring by both the applicant and the county at any point in time. So restricting these permits yet again and adding on new layers of regulations to an already overly regulated industry seems to just be creating more barriers for entry, which I'm sure we will talk about in Part C of this with illegal cultivation within this county. I think it might be time that this board starts to talk about maybe creating a specific cannabis department to deal with both the illegal and the legal side of this business, as it is two separate and completely different industries at this point in time. It looks like the Community Development Department over the last three years has really lumped through processing these applications, which has been quite a burden on this board. And I think that as we stand here today, trying to recover from a pandemic that has stopped this county from processing applications over the last year due to COVID and the multiple other things, fires, floods, droughts, I think it's time that we just invest into this industry. As it's clear through tax reports over the last couple of years, this industry has made a stance in Lake County. And I think that if we were to invest wholly into this industry, along with our traditional ag partners, to sink this community as an agricultural community, whether that be for non-traditional ag and cannabis or what the future holds in psychedelic research, I think that this county has an opportunity to really be a player. I think that we are addressing some major concerns, and they will continue to be major concerns. But this seems very reactive to an early situation. And I don't see a lot of science or data or any type of proof that cannabis, legal applicant cannabis in the system who is trying to abide by the rules poses a threat to your groundwater as if any other housing development, like Gwinoc, or golf courses that are being attracted into this county, those all will have massive effects. And I'm sure you will talk on Yolo County and their lack of enforcement from their side when it comes to touching Lake County water. So I just want to say that I think it's time that the county really look at establishing a department that is specific to cannabis. It will attract the right type of people, the right type of leaders. This board will have confidence that the work is getting done in a timely and efficient manner instead of bogging planners down with cannabis applications that are outside of their standard review process. And I'll leave it with that. I'm sure I'll be able to talk about Point B and Point C as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And those are all the hands in the Zoom room. And I just want to remind everybody that this discussion is on ag as a whole. This is not a conversation that segregates cannabis out as a culprit to our issues of drought. This is just a conversation about drought and the things that are using the most amount of water. Anyone here in the chamber have a public comment on Item A? On how to move forward with our agricultural projects, new agricultural projects? Hold on one second. If you can start over once your mic is on, you should be good. I'm sorry, I thought we were ready.
I understand that we can't just cut some of these projects off midstream, but.
Move that mic over. Can I just move this one?
None of the mics are working.
Oh, none of them?
Nothing, no.
Oh, none of them? This one is.
Only it's working, but I have no control over it.
Oh.
Sir, I apologize. If we can take a two-minute break to fix the technical issues, and we will come right back to your statement.
Thank you.
Check, check.
For working. Test.
Jake, can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you in Zoom.
That's good news. Okay, and do we have the public microphone on? You can give it a quick test.
Check, one, two, one, two, check, okay.
All right, thank you very much, Sam. Sorry for the interruption, and let's continue where we left off.
Anyway, what I started to say was is that I understand you've got projects in the pipeline. You just can't cut people off and tell them you got to stop. But the optics don't look good. When you drive down Highway 29 and you see signs that say conserve water, constrain drought, and you watch the wasted rainbirds just for hours and hours and hours. It just doesn't look good. And then on the other Point B, I know this is probably more of a Lakeport project, but if Hidden Valley Lake can sit there and reclaim or recycle their gray water to water, that would help this county and the city of Lakeport. So if they can do it with 3,000 citizens, we have five here in Lakeport. I think a project, we should find the money to get that started. Because, you know, it's too late. If we don't have any water, we don't have any water. We're really sunk. So that's all.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? Come on up, three minutes.
Hi, my name's Mike Mitzel. I represent a group that has put a lot of money into real estate in this county in the last year. We have multiple projects that are halfway through permitting. So I'd really hate to see a slowdown or a stop of projects that are already in the permitting process. I understand there needs to be some regulation on water, but a lot of these bigger grows, we're talking huge ranches that have abundance of water and thousands of acres of land. So it just, it doesn't seem like the best idea for a county that's so. It's like ag is the lifeblood of this county. That's every job there is is pretty much surrounded with ag or some type of something that's surrounding ag. So I'd hate to see just shut down all ag permits. It just doesn't seem like the right thing to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment from the public in the chambers before I go back to the Zoom room?
Good afternoon, Board. I'm in District Five, my name's Brock Uhl. I just wanted to just kind of mention cannabis is kind of unique in the case of ag and ag projects. As the illegal operations are being moved out, being taken out, that's taking away illegal projects. So when people want to actually come in and bring in legal projects and legal grows, they have to go through, of course, all the state permitting processes and all the things that are not required in other agricultures. And they're meeting this, and they're going to meet these requirements to be legal licensed grows. And so I just wanted to make sure that, I know so many people that are in the Riviera. We rely, almost every job I've worked in the legal industry that I started in about two years ago. On that job, I've worked with people who are neighbors in the Riviera's or maybe over Soda Bay, little more distant neighbors, but still people who are relying on this for their income. And so I just wanted to make that comment. I appreciate the board taking consideration of this and also remembering that maybe the water is not going to be so impactful if we could get these illegal grows cracked down on. And I know that so many legal growers are supportive of that as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comments? Come on up.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I'm sure you've probably heard that President Biden has promised to put or inject $50 billion in the California water infrastructure. And what I'd like to see is the Board of Supervisors explore the fact that we could come up with some other ways of recycling our discharge from our sewage plants. So we can use them on fields, baseball fields, football fields, et cetera, and/or giving it to ag, hemp, pot, for them to use for their needs, their water needs. That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Simon?
So I just do want to talk about it. As you guys know, we have put in for, it's called the Full Circle Project. When we look at long-term water sustainability, and this is a sewer project, as you were talking about, you know, ultimately, we have sewer at this point that is being moved at this point. It is being moved at this time to the geysers throughout the county. But the long-term water sustainability to help with those issues, that is a long-term conversation we're having currently. And we have put in for funds through Mike Thompson's office for direct funding to look at the feasibility opportunities. Like, we put in a request for $400,000. So the Full Circle Project is something, long-term-wise, that we are thinking about for water conservation and needs for the long-term sustainability of our county here. So it's being talked about, and it's a long time coming, for 15 years. And now it's being reinvigorated by the Economic Development Task Force and approved by this board to help move forward. So we hear you, and we'll keep everybody posted as we move forward with that potential project.
Thank you for those comments. Any further public comments from the chamber on Part A? Let's go back to the Zoom room. Let's go with those who haven't spoken yet. Will Weiss?
Hi there, can I be heard?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Sabatier and the other Supervisors for taking this up. My name's Will Weiss, I'm with Bella Vista Farming Company. We work primarily out of the Kelseyville and Big Valley areas on an array of crops, but principally orchards and vineyards. I think this discussion has had a couple of folks come forward during the public comment period to suggest that vineyards, orchards, and other types of agriculture besides cannabis are not subject to permitting requirements, SEQA review, et cetera. I'd like to point out that that's just false. And to suggest otherwise is to misinform the group and the public and what have you. Ag projects in general are significantly reviewed and regulated. Certainly, new ag projects of all types are. And that's simply how we view it from the non-cannabis agriculture side of things in Lake County. As for how to address the question before the board, obviously, those who are suggesting that this needs to be a science-based approach, that this needs to, that any sort of county-based limitation on permits and whatnot needs to be based in fact, not in politics. And that's something that I think the ag community in general is very much behind. But that said, I think one of the most obvious and crucial steps here is to send this matter to the committees of jurisdiction for their evaluation. That is why things like the Ag Advisory Committee were formed. I very much support the language that Supervisor Sabatier has mentioned regarding having the Ag Advisory Committee, et cetera, review some of this. I think that's a great idea. But I think we need to take careful steps here and not significantly damage any of the industries in Lake County, including any of the crops that are involved in the county's agriculture industry. So those are my points.
Thank you very much. Next, Pillsbury Family Farms.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
This is Justin Quill. I was bringing up that about. I, I was bringing up that about shutting down the, for the planters, for the new applicants until they finish their project of the old applicants. Because there's people that have been applied for over three years that can't get into the program because the workers are overworked. And they have to continue on accepting new paperwork regardless. And so a lot of people that are old school, that have been growing in the mountains, can't even get into the program because of so many overloaded people from the city are trying to get in that are part of a water problem down there. And people up like past Lake Pillsbury, where they're shutting down Scott's Dam, there, there's a lot of resources that could be used up in the mountains where cultivation has been going on for many, many years. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Betsy Khan, and please, if you can keep your comments succinct since we've already had a turn.
I'll be very brief. I just want to say that in terms of long-term addressing this issue, this is yet another really excellent reason for us to move forward with the Middle Creek Marsh Restoration Project, which will increase the lake's storage capacity by an estimated 6,000 acre feet, of which approximately 2,000 acre feet per annum would be available for irrigation. That should be a major motivation for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Phone 6205.
Thank you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you, this is Bart Levinson. Like the year that we just went through with the COVID, that was a situation that was unfolding and had happened never before. And so we are in a difficult, uncharted territory that the norms of being able to say we must have the facts and science, while I absolutely support that, realistically, I think we all need to keep our eye on the dropping water level in real time right now. And it isn't, as Senator McGuire recently said in his town hall, it isn't so much the threat of this season, it's the threat of the following seasons, although this season is an enormous concern. The other thing that I want to bring up is, I'm not hearing, and this is a question, I'm not hearing the residents, people who live here, represented. I'm hearing business, ag, real estate, but who speaks for the residents who count on the water here? Who is that?
Are you done with your comment?
Well, it's a question, I'm hoping you'll respond.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you were done with your comment before we moved on and answered that question.
Yes, I, I'm ready for an answer.
Okay, and, and I would suggest that there doesn't appear to be anybody here speaking for themselves, but us as Board of Supervisors represent all of the above and should be cognizant of the needs of each one of the individual slices of our demographics and, and economic needs. And as I brought up earlier, all have impact from residential to commercial to ag. Every activity has some sort of impact to the limited resources that we have, and I don't feel comfortable with the current status quo of how we review all projects to ensure that those that are already here and utilizing those resources are not going to one day find that those resources are not available to them. I, I think we have to, to work in a world where there is finite resources, not infinity resources, or else we will find ourselves in a situation that at one point we have lost full control and there is no going back. And so that, that is why I bring this conversation here, and again, as I stated earlier, and granted, some people will roll their eyes, I believe in climate change. If you look at the trends, it is getting warmer, it is getting hotter, we have higher 100-degree weather days per year than in the past. This is not a random phase. This, this is a trend where it will remain hot, it will remain dry. All of a sudden, we'll go to flood, and then we'll go right back to hot and dry, and again, droughts will be more consistent and longer. And, and I think we need to be prepared now, and I know somebody earlier mentioned it's just a beginning, well, by the time it's really a problem, it's too late. And if we don't have the conversation right now on what conservation looks like in order for the 65,000 people who live here to continuously have access to this life resource, life-giving resource, we need to make certain decisions of whether or not we're doing things correctly now. And, and if we're not doing it correctly, what can we do to change to ensure that we are reviewing these things, and, and I will just base it on my experience from reviewing the Planning Commission reports. I don't see cumulative impact water reports, I see what does your well report say, and the well report will say what the recharge is, but it doesn't say overall when, we used to do a 24-hour test, now we do like a four-hour test to a one-hour. We, we don't understand cumulative impacts, and we need to better understand cumulative impacts because that is what we really need to be cognizant of when we approve and not approve projects. And I see that we have a hand up from Angie Dodd. Not sure if you lowered your hand, or if you were trying to unmute. And if you still have something to say, please raise your hand again, okay, thank you. I see no further comments from the attendees in the Zoom room, just coming back to the boardroom, any further comments on this? So I, I, I will say that I'm, I'm it's kind of difficult for me to, to swallow the entirety of this conversation. Somebody brought it up, and it's been something in my mind the entire time, where our water districts are already asking us to reduce our use, but yet we're nervous to reduce the increase of use. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm not completely understanding that, and I get it that we might upset grape growers, we might upset cannabis growers, but if, if it was us individually that lost access to water, we would be asking questions, and we need to think of it from that perspective, that we're asking one set of people to lower their use and not the other set. And I don't agree with that, I think everybody needs to be treated the same, we're all sharing a resource. If, if our lake is running dry, we shouldn't say stop drinking water, but continue to pull water for agricultural reasons, and we'll get to that with the, the water trucks. But it, it, and it's maybe a bad analogy, but I just, I'm, I'm struggling to understand. Maybe I'm more concerned than I should be. And, and I'll, I'll just leave it at that, it's, it's a struggle to be asking, and we're not asking because we're not necessarily, and we are, we are special districts, our water districts are requesting that people conserve, and, and I think that this is an important subject matter as it's only going to get more difficult. I know they just did a test of moisture in the soils. It was at the lowest in, I think it was 125 years. There is something going on that we need to see in the bigger scheme of we need to be better prepared. If we're not prepared enough, there, there will be some very dramatic issues that we are not, not going to be able to go back on. I know that, yes, we have asked people to do specific things because of COVID-19. And that's what we're here for, and, and we're going to get the brunt of it because some people are going to be happy, some people are going to be unhappy with the decisions that we make. But the idea of our job is to ensure that people have access to the things they need to live, live a quality of life, and wat, water is at one of the very top things. So I, I'm definitely in favor of asking the Ag Advisory Committee to review our water ordinances and update and revise them. I know that when I spoke with Brenna Sullivan from Lake County Farm Bureau, we discussed on having some thresholds for drought seasons and some thresholds on not drought seasons. But I think it needs to be better understood again, we're asking right now, and this is not just, just cannabis, this is, this is all ag. Our, our main basins are already full of ag, all the new stuff. Red Hills might be a good example, it's not a water basin that we're that we're holding data for and gathering data for on, in decades before. It's a new area that is now being utilized for agricultural purposes. What is the situation of the water underneath as we add more and more? We have people in Jerusalem Gray, we have people in High Valley, those are not the type of basins that we hold and continue to gather data. We should be requesting for them to be treated in a similar fashion where we continue to gather that data so that we can ensure that if we start seeing a 20% drop in recharge rate, that maybe it's, it's already too far. Maybe it needs to be a 10% drop in recharge rate, 5% drop, but we don't have those in any ordinance or any policies as to when we say we need to be careful and stop, and that's what worries me is we don't have those thresholds, and we need to work and make sure we have those thresholds. I'm going to stop because I'm, I'm I'm, I'm blathering. So, looking for consensus to move this to the Ag Advisory Committee, and also, we've already had consensus that we will be looking at the revision of the cannabis ordinance, and that would be in lock and step with the CDD Department for when they are prepared for some of these things, and I hope that soon because planting season has already begun for most, and, and eventually we will be past that timeline, that we will have their availability to do so and work with us on that. Supervisor Piska, did you have something you wanted to add?
Well, I, I think it's definitely time that we have this conversation as we look at the sustainability of our ag industries and also the use for our residents here. We have to adapt, we have, we know that changes are happening very rapidly to our climate and to our county. So now is the time to have these conversations. We have to take a comprehensive view of all of our uses, and so this is a, I think, a right step, that we take this to the Ag Committee and possibly form a subcommittee there to really look at the science. Is this specific ask that you want to get, get threshold recommendations from them? I think it's, I think we should be specific with what, what we task that group with right now.
I, I think, yes, I am looking for thresholds for both drought and off-drought seasons, and I'm looking for a more robust ordinance on cumulative water impact with all projects, but ag being the fastest-growing industry we have here, that's why I think they would have the best knowledge and understanding of that stuff. If we could get housing involved, but there's just not that much happening where they would be able to provide a very in-depth report on that stuff, but I, I assume that those meetings will be public. And, and eventually it would come back to us, which again would be public, and that anyone, no matter what industry they're in, or just residents, would be able to provide the input.
So Supervisor Scott, are you able to attend the meeting on Monday and lead this discussion there?
What time is the meeting on Monday, because I?
I believe it's at 11:00 AM, and I'm not sure I'm going to be able to make it.
No, I'm, no, I can't make it at 11:00.
Carol, are we going to be finished, do you think? Okay, then I'll, I'll make it. It sounds like I'll make it. Okay, wonderful. All right, so, um...
And just wanted to make sure that there was consensus on the details that I requested, because this is, this is not coming from me, this needs to come from the Board.
Yes, I, I am, I am, I, I agree with having the, the committee look into this, I really like Brenna Sullivan's her recommendations as well to look into the water, and I, I support you on the climate change, because that's one of our biggest arguments when it comes to the Lake Pillsbury situation, you know, the snowpack's melting and having no other water, so I, I agree with you, and I'm glad that this group will be looking into it, so I, I agree.
Yeah, I've already said that, yeah, absolutely, I support the ag projects, you know, the ag group committee looking at this. And obviously, it's going to be a long-term conversation as we're having here, and you know, there are a lot of things, as was said, that may already be in place, that we just need to try and, you know, review and look at those opportunities, how to enhance them, and yeah, so, I'm in favor.
Okay.
So, if we come back with suggestions on thresholds and cumulative impact, then maybe the next step after that is an ad hoc committee for a broader discussion, but we can get to that point a little bit further down the road.
Right. Thank you very much. And so if we can go, Jake, back to the presentation real quick, and then move on to Item B. And I know that this whole item is taking some time, but I think it's an important subject matter for us to tackle. So other issues with droughts is our water trucks. Some are permitted, some are not. The enforcement of water trucks comes from Yolo County Flood Control, I've been in conversations with Yolo County Flood Control, and they do not have boots on the ground here in Lake County, are, are unable, mostly unable to enforce the rules and regulations. They do sometimes send out fines or penalties. But again, we're working together to try to create more teeth in their ability to actually pull through with these fines and penalties as well. There has been a new interpretation, and I'm going to look at Kristin, I don't know if I'm saying her last name, Sick. They do have a new interpretation of what I believe is the Solano decree that if the lake is below 3.22 REMSIE, it is now illegal, or it is being interpreted as illegal to draw water for agricultural purposes. This was not necessarily the case before that. So if that is the case, and I haven't received the memo, other than receiving an email saying that that is the final interpretation, then I think we need to make sure and make that public, because I'm not sure that that's still happening. In fact, Yolo County Flood Control was unaware that in our regulations for cannabis, it's illegal to truck water, yet they were approving permits specifically for trucks to bring water from the lake. And so those things need to be rectified, I'm, I'm happy that I started the conversation with them. Our two-by-two committee meetings will come back together, so we make sure that we don't lose sight of communication to make sure that we're working together. But overall, the water trucks that draft water from the lake are only a portion of the water trucks that are in our communities. I, I'm hearing of many water trucks that are pulling from well, well water and then selling it into other areas. And I know that our laws state that they're not allowed to legally take it out of the county, but it doesn't talk about moving it all around the county, especially if it's illegal activities such as giving it to cannabis, or I would suggest other agricultural activities as well. How do you control that? That, that's the question that, that I want to ask you, and I've had fire districts complain about the number of trucks, in our phone calls with the EOC, we've heard complaints from the sheriff about water trucks, Water Resources gets complaints about water trucks. There are, there's a lot of activity going on with water trucks in our area. That doesn't mean that water trucks are bad, please don't take it in that way. But it does mean that we need to make sure that those that are moving water around are moving it for the right reasons and, and doing it legally. And so during a fire, this is my suggestion, during a fire, there are barricades that are put up for the zones that are danger zones. The only way that you can get past those barricades, well, not the only way, but one of the only ways is if you have an agricultural emergency permit that allows you to go take care of your agricultural crop, past the barricades. I saw this during the, I think it was the Valley Fire, where up Deaner Drive, they were letting people go through to go pick the, the grapes because it was time to harvest and they, they needed to go get their grapes, and that was being allowed due to an emergency agricultural permit. I'd like to offer an emergency water truck permit where we have a list of the legal reasons why you would be moving water around in our county during a drought, where you can legally draft that water. draft that water from, have them sign it, get a permit, and make that permit visible on the back of trucks. And then work with law enforcement to enforce this emergency drought rules to limit water use. I have been speaking with our CHP, our local CHP. They have pulled over water trucks and in fact, I believe they've even confiscated water trucks, but not for purposes of moving water, but purposes of just traffic infractions. And I would like to have the discussion on, again, the idea should be that we save all the water we can by limiting the illegal uses and illegal activity of water. And I'm getting calls from so many different locations of where water trucks are going to. And so again, want to open it up for a discussion on, do we do nothing? Do we stop it entirely? Or do we figure out a way to regulate it? Which regulation is difficult, but at the same time, we declared an emergency drought, not just so we can access money from the state of California or from the federal government, but because we've got to do something to make sure that we don't have our water disappearing for ridiculous reasons. So again, I've offered a suggestion of how I feel we can regulate this. This would give us more local control rather than asking Yolo County Flood Control to do this, which again, they do not have boots on the ground to do so, and opening it up for conversation. Supervisor Pyska.
So I recently saw a line of water trucks lined up at Red Bud Park and I was wondering the same thing. So there are no regulations for water trucks pulling out of the lake at this time or that are being enforced at this time?
So Yolo Flood Control provides permits and we, up until recently, didn't have a list of who was permitted and who was not. I'm trying to find who our contact person is in the county that should receive those things so that we're in the know. But until, up until now in the present, we don't know who is legally allowed, other than an email I just received recently. We don't know who's legally allowed to draft water out of the lake and what they're permitted to use it for.
So are you suggesting that there be designated places for legal drafting?
I think that, I think there's already designated areas. I think that in the future, we need to maybe find a better way to regulate it through some sort of keypad. If you go to the printer here, you have to type in your own code and they know who's the one who printed, just to kind of keep track. We should be able to do the same thing with water trucks where they can type in a password and we know that it's them, a specific entity that is pulling water and we can keep track of how much water they're actually pulling. Right now, it's based on the honor system. They submit something saying, "I pulled 2,000 gallons today." Well, how do we know? Because it's the honor system. And I think that we are missing a lot of information in the long run. I think that it's easy to make mistakes. I think it's easy to forget. And I think that it's easy also to bypass giving all information. And I won't be specific on individual entities, but in an email I did receive from Yolo, there was some suspicions of who was honest and who was not very honest.
It seems like even if you had some kind of monitoring system, it would still be the honor system because you can pull water from a lot of different places. So that's a concern and you could pull water right next to one of the monitors and bypass that altogether. So logistically, I'm just trying to figure out how that would work, where it would be effective.
And just to add, we have water trucks who are being very bold and literally going to fire stations and stealing water.
Yeah.
Where I just spoke to a fire marshal about a month ago who ran one off and basically said, "I don't want to ever see you here again." And we have fire hydrants that are known for being unlocked and abused. We have another problem on our hands where again, water is being misused, especially during a drought. And if there was a mechanism of where you're supposed to pull water from and a passcode, at the very least, we would know when we see them going directly and bypassing it that at least that shows that it's illegal. Yes, anyone can break the law anytime they want to, but if we make it that much more obvious, it's easier to catch them. And I don't intend for that to be our short-term solution. I think that's a long-term solution. I want to talk more, or I was hoping to talk more specifically about short-term solutions during the next six months as we anticipate water levels to continue to drop. How do we deal with water trucks?
Well, as a short-term solution, does it make sense to have some kind of physical monitoring with people? I mean, don't we have boat ramp monitors at times? And would there be funding from the drought emergency to have staff do this for the next couple of months?
And I don't disagree that that could help to ask our ramp monitors, but I know mostly they're volunteers. I don't know how much more we can ask from volunteers and it's limited in who's pulling from the lake versus who's pulling from wells and then selling that off. I think that's happening more than from the lake. Supervisor Simon?
I just don't know. You know, we talked about this, we talked about this through the pandemic, we talked about here, enforcement. Putting it down on paper, looking for permits, enforcement. These guys aren't, some of them are driving during the day, but most of them are in the middle of the night. You know, if they're going to be doing something illegal, that's probably how they're moving these water trucks up and down whatever road they're going down. You know, and ultimately, you know, I just get stuck, you know, admirable conversation, but the enforcement part is really, you know, where you lose me on it. Because how do you enforce that? I mean, I'm a private landowner, I have a great well, I want to sell water to those, you know, to somebody that's being moved in the county. That's, you can do that now. You can't, maybe you can't move it out of the county, but you can do it in county. You know, I just, I don't have an answer. And it's really the enforcement part. I mean, we went through this enforcement conversation during the pandemic. We knew it needed to be done, but how did we get it done? You know, those are the real questions and conversations, you know, as we move forward, you know, with this. Big, open-ended conversation, that's all I can say. Real challenge because, you know, you are going to get folks that are caught up, folks that have lived here all their lives, they do have to truck water. They do do that, you know, especially, I'll just, as prime example, anywhere on the south end of the Lake County, you know, the county line there, past, you know, our property, even our property, we never had water, we had to truck water on the rantry all the time. So all south, south of the county, past Caliomi Water District, everyone is trucking water right now. Every one of the residents out there are trucking water, are having to deal with, you know, just the conditions that we're in right now. So I just see it being, you know, a real challenge on the enforcement part of it, so.
And I haven't brought up the ordinance that I shared with all of you in the agenda item from Siskiyou County where they're putting complete stops of no water trucks on these roads because these roads are known for illegal grows. That I don't think we can do. I was just sharing with you all something that is occurring with water trucks somewhere in our state. I don't agree with it because so many are already using it just to get water to their residences to drink. It's not, there's not bad uses. So I'm not trying to stop water trucks. I'm trying to ensure that the water trucks that are moving are moving for the right reasons and so we can try to limit those that are moving for the wrong reasons.
I understand that. I understand exactly what you're saying, but it's the enforcement part. You know, who's going to be out there? We talked about ramp monitors. Yeah, we have a few ramp monitors, but who's going to be out there enforcing this, you know? Unless you've had a conversation with the sheriff that this is something, or Ohio Patrol has all those, you know, as we deal with it, you know, or just enforcement of abandoned vehicles on the road. You know, lot less of those. We have a lot of them, but you know, you pass one probably every day you drive around on the side of the road. So with the conversation, I just don't have, you know, anything to suggest how we're going to do it because it really comes down to the enforcement part. We know we don't have the workforce to do that. So anyway, enforcement stuff is tough stuff getting over.
And I don't disagree with you that the enforcement, nothing works without the enforcement. That was my reason for reaching out to CHP as I figured that they would be our greatest ally. They're out on the roads and they're meant to ensure the safety of all those driving, but they're not meant to ensure the safety of our water use. So it's definitely not 100%.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Grant.
I should tell you, and I realize that you offered that Siskiyou ordinance only as an example, but that ordinance is already being challenged, so.
Okay.
I brought up the ordinance earlier.
I brought up the ordinance earlier prematurely. And anyhow, yeah, I was just looking at the definition of what it states on 3-4 about water trucks. And then I thought about what Supervisor Simon had stated about people needing to, you know, truck their own water and whatnot. So it'd be very difficult to, you know, figure out the bladders on the back, how it says in this ordinance, like, you know, it's kind of a very difficult task, I agree. And so I know that in certain areas, there are people that are using these bladders to do illegal grows. And I only highlight Spring Valley because they have their own water system out there with the special districts of CSA out there. And so just, I'm just highlighting that because I see this in the ordinance and just recognizing the challenge.
I can't see, I was going to look for Supervisor Scott, but I couldn't see earlier. Supervisor Scott?
Yeah, I'm on the same page as Supervisor Simon. I like the fact that we're talking about this, bringing it to attention that we have trucks that are moving water illegally, but we have many enforcement issues that we are unable to tackle in this community. We abatement, the cars that are being left, garbage on people's property, there's so many things that we need to tackle and we just do not have the capability and the capacity to regulate this, to put another ordinance on there for regulation. I just don't see us at this time being able to manage that.
And I see that Sheriff Martin is up on the screen as well. I know that I spoke to him about this and expressed to him that his law enforcement, we can't ignore crime and start paying attention to water. And sorry to CHP, but I even let Sheriff Martin know that I was hoping CHP would be our greatest ally for helping with this, but even they have their specific duties as to what they're supposed to be looking for. So it's definitely difficult. Supervisor Pyska?
I mean, ultimately, this water misuse is from illegal grows and we're having a difficult time even getting our arms around that. And so you would be pulling resources likely from that to go after the water truck, so it-
And I want to speak on that, but I also mentioned Sheriff Martin, want to make sure I don't see his hand up, but just to give him a chance to speak since he was mentioned.
Sure, I'll comment. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. I've got a new microphone. So, yeah, a couple of things. Supervisor or Chair Sabatier, you mentioned the checkpoints that we have in times of fire. I just want to make it clear for people out there that, you know, we're not, the sheriff's office isn't withholding resources. When we have those fire emergencies, declared state of emergencies, we often request mutual aid from around the region. So a lot of those checkpoints are not staffed by Lake County deputies. They're staffed by surrounding counties or agencies, sometimes all across the state that come in in response to that fire. So our staffing is available during those as a result of mutual aid. I think a request for mutual aid for this type of situation would probably go unanswered. I certainly wouldn't send my deputy sheriffs out to look for water trucks in some neighboring county and I wouldn't expect my counterparts in different jurisdictions to do this, to do it either. I was going to raise my hand, but a lot of the supervisors, or a couple of supervisors actually pointed out, made some of the points as far as our ability to enforce this that I was going to make. We have plenty of laws and ordinances on the books and it's not a matter of, you know, our deputy sheriffs aren't, you know, they're not willing to do this because they're lazy or anything. Quite frankly, they're tasked out. As I sit here looking at our CAD log, our criminal, or our computer aided dispatch log, we have five calls pending and only three deputy sheriffs and one sergeant working patrol today. And those aren't, you know, little minor calls. There are two calls that regard abuse of children, whether it's physical or sexual abuse. I have another one that's a domestic violence call. I have another one where, you know, somebody's wanting to report a burglary. Quite frankly, they're just, they're tapped out, they're busy. I don't have the staffing to commit to any activity like this. So as much as I do agree with you, I do agree that it's important. When it comes to deploying my resources, I need to make sure I do that in accordance with our capabilities and we just don't have the capability to support an ordinance that would go out and monitor when and where people are drafting water, what they're drafting water for, not to mention the fact that it's, if people are criminals and they're doing this, it's not going to take a criminal mastermind to, you know, to think that, hey, I could just lie about the reason I'm drafting water and then when the cops ask me, I'll tell them it's for some legal reason, but it's really not. It's, this is a tough challenge and I just want to address some of those concerns so that people don't think that, you know, I'm being derelict in our duties or my deputies are being derelict in their duties. It's simply a matter of staffing and resources for enforcement.
And just to add to that, nobody is saying that any of law enforcement is being derelict in their duties, but we know what our limitations are and I think that we expect our constituents to deal with their limitations and to meet our standards. And I think we need to do the same in finding solutions and creative ways on how to do, handle these things because people are looking to us to solve some of these problems and solutions are much more preferred and unfortunately, they're difficult. I'm going to open it up to the public in case the public has any comments on the water trucks. I know I did actually, let's see if we can start with, where is she? I see Kristin Sick is here, twice actually. And seeing if she wanted to make a comment. She is from Yolo County Flood Control.
Hey, this is Kristin Sick. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sorry for saying your last name incorrectly.
No worries, no worries, Chair Sabatier. I appreciate you providing me an opportunity to speak. And just to clarify what you had said at the opening of this item, all of the requests that we've received for this 2021 irrigation season have just been claims for non-agricultural water. As we've talked about, you know, it's hard to know what the water is really being used for, but our district is ensuring our due diligence is done to ensure that there's no agricultural use that's happening. Because as you mentioned, in the Solano decree, there is a reference to when we're below 3.22 feet at the lake, we can only provide municipal and industrial use of the water. And, you know, we really appreciate collaborating with you on this. We've had many frustrating years where we've tried to investigate what's really going on and it's, as you mentioned, it's difficult for us to not be, have a physical presence up there, but we do, we would like to learn more about ways we could potentially enforce it. I feel for all of you, as you mentioned, the staffing concerns and the resources that's available to do that, because that's exactly how we felt, is that there's a lot of competing objectives and interests that we have going on and trying to solve this unfortunately is just not physically possible for us right now. But any ways that we can try to work together to improve the situation, I think is very well-received on our end. So thank you for at least reaching out to us and collaborating with us on this item.
And more to come. Thank you. Any further public comment from the Zoom room on this? And seeing none, anybody from the public here in our chamber have any comments?
Thomas Nickel from, a resident of Scotts Valley. What I'm going to probably say here is pretty redundant, but anyway, first of all, Title 28 of the Lake County Code says that you can transport one acre foot of water out of this county without a permit. So let's clarify that. The issue I have with, well, first of all, I have a neighbor that's obviously selling water to sources in and around Lake County and I've observed his truck, one of his trucks, excuse me, one of his vendor's trucks, extracting water out of his well and bringing it up to- and bringing it up to Mendocino County. Now, the idea of putting permits, it's plaster on the back of the truck, might be a good idea, because we can determine where that truck is mostly being used. And if they're found in another county, and they have a sticker that says Lake County Use Only, there could be some ways of administering some kind of punitive action. The next, the next point is, these trucks are really, really heavy. And I've noticed that, and I could be wrong, but Lakeport has forbidden any water trucks from extracting water out of any of the fire hydrants in the city limits. Now, that could be either for several reasons. Either it's a bad visual to ask the citizens of Lakeport to conserve water and then see a water truck hauling water out of the, out of the city, presumably going to a pot row. And then also, they're so heavy, they're probably wrecking the roads. And out in Scotts Valley, our road out there is terrible, and there's water trucks going up and down that road three and four times a day, going to and from this neighbor of mine that's getting water out of his well and disruting it around the lake. So that's another issue. The roads just cannot take this kind of punishment. And according to Scott, Scott DeLeon, there is no way that he can enforce any kind of enforcement on this. And the the planning commissioner or other, or a individual at the planning department told me that there is in the code, in the cannabis code, that you can only make one water delivery to a cannabis grow. So anyway, I find this is kind of odd. The other thing is, with these water trucks, in the past, I've observed potable water tankers distributing water for dust mitigation. That's totally unresponsive, not responsible for these construction companies to do that. They need to find a way to get non potable sources of water to do their dust mitigation.
And sir, if you could finish your comments since your three minutes are up?
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public in the chamber? Okay, so we'll bring it back to the board. It's disappointing, and I'm disappointed in myself. I don't know exactly what the the solution is. But to receive so many complaints, have our departments receive so many complaints, and yet feel so unable to help solve the problem. And which, and I'm going to just move forward into Part C, which leads me to Part C, which is, stopping those water trucks is probably the easiest and best way to kill illegal cannabis. It is their lifeblood. If we can't stop the water trucks, I don't know of any other way we can stop illegal cannabis. They, yes, there's water diversion, and that we need to create a better, and we have a good relationship. We need to get more fish and wildlife folks out here. They are probably the scariest thing to illegal cannabis out there. But I don't know of how else, I know that we are doing work and we are getting rid of plants, but the number of plants that we're getting rid of versus the number of plants that are out there, and the number of plants that are impacting our water tables, our creeks, and our lake is, I'm scared to know exactly how many that is. I flew the other day, and I'm sorry to use District Three. District Two has its illegal grows as well. We actually have a very big fish and wildlife case on the on the border of Yolo County, unfortunately, and many more. But I flew over District Three the other day to look at the National Monument. We were doing some reporting on the National Monument, taking pictures and videos. And the number of obviously illegal grows, just in the one region that we flew over, is disastrous. And I'm not going to give up on this. If we can't do something this year in a exceptional drought to deal with illegal cannabis, then when exactly can we or do we plan to do something? And I know that our resources are strapped. That's great. But we also want that person to clean up their property, even though their resources are strapped. We want, we have standards for code violations that we expect all people to meet. In my opinion, that's on us, the same situation when it comes to illegal grows, and we have to figure out something. And I think the easiest way is basically just like an old school siege, you starve them out, you starve the plants by not allowing them to access water. And I want to open it up to see if anyone has any other ideas, but I, we have to get past the excuses, and we have to get to solutions. And I hope that if, at the very least, what we come out of this is an ad hoc committee to really focus on illegal grows, to work with fish and wildlife, to work with our federal representatives, to work with our state representatives, we have to make a stronger attack on the things that are bringing crime, the things that are tearing our environment up, and the things that are going to impact us the most during a drought. And I hope that there is will within this board to do that, because again, this is the opportune moment. Somebody spoke about money that's coming from our federal government. There's also money coming down from our state government as well. We have to take full advantage, and we got to figure out how to end this. Supervisor Scott?
You know, I completely agree with what you're saying. And I believe we, as a board, are already moving this direction. No, we're not moving fast enough, but just what we approved this morning is trying to look at our CDD department and see what we could do to make them more efficient there. So I think we're moving in this direction. It's just gonna take some time. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. We need to be working on our code enforcement. We need, you know, more boots on the ground. But I think we're going this direction. It's just not gonna happen right now. But I definitely agree with you, and I feel the same pain when I get those phone calls about abandoned vehicles, or people that aren't taking care of their property. I feel the same hopelessness. We are trying to change, we're trying to do better. It's just not happening fast enough.
Thank you for your comments. Supervisor Simon?
Well, this is the one thing that I think we could get control of. You know, we talked about this when we were drafting the ordinance. And I talked about, you know, so we drafted the ordinance in in the mind of compliance. For those who wanted to be in compliance, here's the roadmap to do that. We have had the ordinance here in Lake County since 2018. It's now 2021. If you wanted to do it legally, you're probably in the pipeline or attempted to do that at this point. With the illegal ones, with the new satellite imagery and technology we have, maybe it's now we draw that line and say, listen, we've given you that opportunity for three years to step up and do it the right way. If you haven't, then maybe we start talking about that moratorium, or closing the door on the folks that have got into the line, and we really start to concentrate on the illegal eradication of the cannabis. Because there is, there is a way. Yes, we have work to do. It's been a slow and a long process. But I think, you know, it's been talked about numerous times, probably 250 to 260 applications. Those are the folks who want to do it right. And I think drawing along at some point is something we have to do as a board. And then it's going to take care of a lot of these illegal issues, illegal trucking of water. From my understanding, and it was mentioned today, that you could ship one truckload of water, but I could have sworn ordinance, you had to have an onsite water source to do cannabis. You couldn't truck your water, and you had to have an onsite water source. So those, you know, probably the industry's gonna freak out that I'm saying it, but listen, the door has been open for three years. If you were gonna do it legally in Lake County, and yes, we'll get some feedback of, well, I've heard the process is this and that. Well, the process does need a lot of work, and we're gonna continue working on that to figure this industry out. But this is one thing I think we could draw a line in the sand and say, listen, you've had three years to do it right. If you really wanted to, and you want to grow correctly in Lake County, you should have already been in line or up at the third floor trying to make those applications. And as we're talking for all ag industry, there is a level of how much needs to be in Lake County. There's always how many acres of grapes do we have in Lake County? We get that in the crop report. There's always a limit to what needs to be done. So those are my thoughts on it. When we draft the ordinance and we talk about it, at no point was there a promise that this would just be open ended. And as we redraft the ordinance, I think there's an opportunity for us to really establish the industry in the right way, and to help weed out the illegal grows that are happening all over. So don't have a clear path, but I know, I think this is one we could, we could really get a handle on, especially with the satellite imagery, the code enforcement, some of the things we're doing, and to really send a message. For the first three years, we had to be inclusive. Come on in, we wanted you to join the program. But if you haven't made that decision at this point, and you're growing this year, we should really consider that. I know that's harsh, but it's the same thing. You know, you can't start up a bar and just start serving without a liquor license, and continue that on and violate those ordinance, you know, violate selling to kids underage or out in your backyard. You eventually have to get your license, and then you have to follow the rules. It's that simple.
Thank you for those.
I feel a little more confident about enforcing this in this opportunity, because we have the satellite imagery for this year that we're gonna start using, and we can say, you know, we're setting a deadline of 2021. And if you weren't in the legal process, and you're growing illegally this year, there should be ramifications with that juice permit.
Thank you. Supervisor Paeska?
I agree with that. I definitely agree that it is the right moment to really set that hard line. But Supervisor Simon, are you also thinking an ad hoc committee is the way to do this? Or or is this something that we tackle as we rewrite the ordinance?
That's, that's, Anita's got something to say.
Your board may remember that maybe a couple of years ago, there was an ordinance drafted that would have enacted pretty severe penalties for illegal cannabis cultivations. At the time, the person who was then the chief building official wanted to make the penalties much more onerous. Keeping in mind, the Constitution prevents the imposition of excessive fines and fees, you have to be able to actually support them. But regardless of that, it kind of drifted away, and it hadn't come back to your board. But your board was already considering an ordinance, if you recall, that would have exacted penalties for illegal grows.
And just to follow up on, I remember the conversations, we didn't get there as a board, because we were looking for that inclusive language. But now, like I said, it's been three years. Those, that path has been, has been given. And, you know, I think with the satellite imagery capabilities we have now, you know, we keep going forward. Because I don't only think it's just the fine part of it, and then you're able to get into the program later. I had mentioned it, it was obviously not well received, but, you know, now we've been over three years of stuff, you know, you missed your opportunity. At least, that's the way I feel about it. That's just my personal opinion. You know, we're trying to establish it in a way that can really help the industry grow. I know that the legal folks are definitely on the side of making sure that the illegal grows are taken care of. So hopefully those conversations, Anita, thank you for reminding me, and maybe it's time to bring that back and really set those in line as we redo the ordinance.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder.
All I have to do is print it out. I can bring it back anytime you like.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
Supervisor Simon, so are you suggesting, which I think might be good, that when somebody applies for cannabis permit, we can go back to the imagery and look at their property? If we find that cannabis had already grown on that property, they will no longer be able to get a permit? Is that kind of what we're looking at? Because I think that would be definitely doable.
Well, I think, you know, going back, this year will be the first year we really got the, you know, the satellite imagery. So we did that for a reason. I mean, we don't have the workforce, you know, to get out there and check everything. So looking at these opportunities, yeah, that would be a conversation that I would definitely be willing to have. Like I said, we've set the ordinance, it's been in place for three years. If you were gonna do it right, you're probably in line to do that. There may be, you know, other future ones. But yeah, exactly like you said, if you just didn't do it, you're growing illegally, and you're still growing illegally this year, yeah, we could go back and use that as a determination of, no, you had the, you had the legal path, but you chose not to take that. And for whatever reason, and yes, they could point the finger, oh, it takes too long for an application, this or that. But if you're gonna put in a viable business, you want all the pertinent applications and use permits in place. So you're gonna be successful long term, not just short term to make as much money as possible.
I think that would be very doable and easy to go back and look at, put that in our ordinance. I would agree to that.
Thank you very much for the comments. Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that. Thank you for bringing that up, Moke. And the ordinance looks like something that we can resurrect, and I think it'd be very beneficial. The area you're talking about, I mentioned earlier prematurely with Spring Valley, it is a very highly illegal grow area, and it's in a community growth boundary. And there's a lot of water issues. People have the videos and evidence of people actually doing the same thing, just like this gentleman explained earlier about the trucking. And so I think bringing something like this is a solution that we can handle, and hopefully get a grasp on some of these illegal grows. I'd really be eager to, if we had to do a committee, I'd be glad to be on it. If not, if we can do the ordinance, do a workshop together here, I'm fine with that, too. But I would really like to get a grasp on this, because it's probably about 60% of my calls. I don't know about yours, but yeah.
And it only gets worse as the smell intensifies. I'm gonna ask a question to Ms. Grant, and I see that Sheriff Martin is not here. And if he was, his eyebrows would be very raised at this question. Oh, there he is. Okay, I'll look for the reaction. I know that we've gotten ourselves in trouble in taking certain actions that we should not have. However, I would like to ask, and I think that the answer is gonna be, possibly have to come back to us, I don't know that you have an answer today, but in the midst of a declared state of emergency for a drought, and knowing who is legal and who is illegal based on now having a legitimate process to go through, what is the possibility of summary abatements? And I know it's a very sensitive subject when it comes to summary abatements, and I know we've gotten ourselves in trouble, but I think we obviously did something wrong last time. But here, unfair business practice, stealing water for the better good of everyone, is there a possibility where that could be utilized, maybe depending on the size of the grow? I don't know. Just just kind of asking the question rather than hiding from it.
Well, some very questionable advice was was given at one point from a non related source. But but regardless of that, the, when you're talking about a summary abatement, there has to be an immediacy of harm, an imminent harm. If you can wait three, four, five days, you don't have imminent harm. So summary abatement and using that, it would depend upon how it was drafted and under what very dire circumstances. It wouldn't necessarily be completely excluded, but it would have to be very, very well explained to to meet the criteria that the public would expect when you're going to just go walk on and take something from them. You've got to have a very heightened sense of what the immediate danger is. For example, if you walk past somebody's home and the property is on fire, you can enter to help put that fire out. If you, if, there are other circumstances where you'll see a dire need for action. But it can't be, well, we'll get to it in a week or two, that's no longer imminent. When you're aware of trash and debris that's immediately leaching into the soil and perhaps getting into a water table, that can be imminent. If you're aware of a huge garbage pile where rats and other vermin are involved, that could be imminent because of the health hazards. But again, if if you're going to act after days, it's very difficult for you to say that it's immediate. So you'd have to set up very narrow circumstances to justify that with regard to drought. It's not impossible.
But move cautiously, obviously, is.
Yes, you'd have to move cautiously in order to ensure that you had justification for the immediacy of the action that would justify it. Again, it's not impossible, but it wouldn't be every circumstance that would give rise to a. to a summary abatement.
Because I, I know that in having conversations with Sheriff Martin, part of the issue of his task force that he currently has, that consists of two deputies or two officers, is, is the red tape and the paperwork that has to come up front before we can ever do anything. I'm not gonna provide absolute numbers, because I don't even think that we know what the absolute numbers are, but the number of grows that we can get to on an annual basis is dismal in comparison to the number of grows that exists out there that we would like to get to.
And of course, how the sheriff proceeds on a criminal case is, is different from what we're talking about with regard to an abatement process.
Right, right, and I think that the abatement process is, is more, offers a better result than just a criminal process, because I, my gut feeling is that the sheriff ends up very delayed and very, the, the delayed reaction to a criminal action is, is not the same as the immediate action of an abatement action.
But I can also tell you from the actions that environmental health has had to take in regard to debris removal, which have required in almost every circumstance a warrant to be obtained because of the setup time, the length of time in order to address it. The judges upstairs have been extremely accommodating with regard to warrants, and there's, there is generally a process and a, almost a template that one can use that will cover all the bases that are needed. So even with a warrant system and perhaps an expedited abatement process, none of these things would be lengthy. You wouldn't be waiting a couple of weeks to have a judge look at a warrant. As I said, the, the Superior Court tends to be very aware and cooperative of emergency circumstances and health issues.
Okay, thank you very much. And Sheriff Martin, again, since your name was mentioned, I'm not just gonna move on, let you speak on that, because I know you and I have had discussions about this, and I know you feel strongly about being cautious in how we move forward as well.
Absolutely. Madam County Counsel will cover everything very, very efficiently. She's spot on, and we talk about these things not being overly burdensome. It's not that they're extremely lengthy, it's that they're very, there are so many of them. So if it's a few hours of time spent writing up a warrant, getting it signed, and then going out and serving it, you multiply that by the number of properties, the travel time logistics involved, you know, I, I don't know that, you know, certainly more staff would help us address more of the issues. I don't know what army of people it would take to effectively address all of the illegal grows here in the county. I, I don't know what that would look like, but I know that we'll, we'll probably not get there. To put some numbers up for you, we're well over 100,000 plants that we've eradicated so far this year, and we're just at the beginning of the grow season. We're probably on track to eradicate several hundred thousand plants, which is not an uncommon event annually here in Lake County, and that's where we're at. So there's a lot of people expressing some frustration about the marijuana that's growing, the associated illegal water issues that come along with them, but I wanted to get that out there, let people know what, what is occurring. We're not gonna be able to get all of them, and we are going to be conscientious of respecting people's constitutional rights and securing appropriate court authorization to enter property and eradicate when we, when we do so.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and open this up for the public if there's no further comments from supervisors. And again, just having a discussion with potential creative ideas on how we can help ourselves be better off when this is all done versus just allowing things to continue as is. Let's start in the boardroom. Any comments about dealing with illegal grows?
Where is the DEA involved in this county right now, or did they just, aren't they helping us at all? Are they able to help the Sheriff Department or, or us at all?
And I'll let the sheriff respond to that.
Sure, the DEA actually provides a grant. I think this year they provided $186,000 that contributes towards our efforts for domestic cannabis eradication and suppression. So they're, they participate in, in that way, but providing financial support, a lot of that covers overtime for our deputy sheriffs that participate in marijuana eradication. As far as actual investigations, it's, it's a pretty rare thing for the DEA and the U.S. Attorney's Office to adopt a, a cultivation or marijuana case unless there are certain criteria that are, that are met. I'll just tell you, it's, it's pretty rare for them to come in and take enforcement action for marijuana-related crimes.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any further public comments from the board chambers? Okay, let's go to the Zoom room. Any public comments from the Zoom room? And we have Sean Connell.
Yeah, good afternoon. This is Sean Connell, District Four. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. I, I appreciate the conversation we are having here. I cannot be in more agreeance that illegal cultivation absolutely must be addressed. I think we all understand, whether you are a applicant or you are outside of the system, that this is, this is gonna put a blight on people who are trying to conform to the new, well-regulated market established by Proposition 64. My big question is, I love that we have the sheriff on the line here, however, he is not the lead enforcement authority in this county. That is the district attorney, and I would urge that the district attorney be at this board to tell you how she will prosecute illegal activity. Under the state of California, it is a misdemeanor violation. Fish and Wildlife, the Water Board, violations go to landowners. Most illegal grows are not the landowner cultivating illegal cannabis within this county. The sheriff's office is strapped for resources. I do not foresee that he has the staff or the ability to address the illegal activity that we see in this county and within this region. I think the DA and the DAs of this region need to take a harder approach in prosecuting illegal activity, and without the DA being in this board and speaking to this exact moment in time that we were dealing with, Sheriff Martin will be hard-stretched to have this stopped within our county. He can cut plants every single day for the next 50 years and never make an impact. Without being followed up by prosecution and harsh prosecution efforts, we will be dealing with this for millennia to come. I've said multiple times, creating, ending a pathway for cultivators to come into compliance while also targeting illegal activity only gives an illegal option. You have to allow anybody who is not in the current system to come into the fold. It is a hard-pressed transition to make for people who have been existing in this industry for multiple years with little to no government oversight, and now they are strapped with massive amounts of oversight that ties into massive amount of financial responsibilities. And to shut the door down because they haven't made it in in three years, even though we've been open and we've been trying to help them, I, I don't foresee that that's a real case. This ordinance has been changed on multiple cases, on multiple times. Within the last couple of months, farmland protective zones has come on, there's still not an active, real ordinance available to the public to understand the laws and ordinances that are restricting this industry. So I think that there is a multi-pronged approach that needs to happen here. I am grateful for this conversation. I agree we need to attack illegal cannabis operations in the harshest way possible, but I do not think it is the sheriff's office that will handle that at the end of the day. I believe it's the DA. And without the DA representation and, and the forethought on how they will prosecute going forward, this is all a moot point. And I think Sheriff Martin will tell you, he is understaffed to deal with the levels of illegal cultivation we have in this county. Other than that, I appreciate your time. I appreciate the work you're doing. I think we all understand that this is a massive change and that it does need help shaping it to fit this county coffers and the borders.
If you could finish up.
And I support anything we can do to help make that a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. And last hand I see is Pillsbury Family Farms. Yep.
Um, this is Justin Quail again. I, I just have a solution and not really, but people that have been in the application and have been in process of trying for the last three years to get in should not be excluded because they can't afford all of the upkeep to be busted just because somebody lost paperwork at the county or, you know, because of, not because of their situation. They shouldn't be put out because they're waiting on an inspection and they need to get in because they're only in a seasonal area where we have snow packed and can't produce year-round like down in the valleys. We, we're not trying to impact people's water sources because we're not drawing off of it year-round. So to shut us down, that's, that's harsh, especially when some of us have been trying really, really hard to be a part of your program, shut down for years and, and can't financially stay, shut down for years. So I just thank you for letting me put my two cents out there. I don't think it's fair to go after the people that are in process, that are almost complete.
Thank, thank you for your comments.
I just wanna clarify a statement on that. You know, if, if that was what was heard on the book, that, that is not what I was advocating for. If you're in the process, if you're in some stage with the application, I wasn't saying we're shutting those folks down. What I'm saying is, the illegal, absolute illegal have not started a process, anything is the illegal grows that I'm talking about.
Thank you for that. So I see no further hands up. Let's go, I see Cody Leck put up his hand, and I did not actually close public comment. I need to actually state that I closed public comment, so let, let's make this the last comment.
Um, hello, my name is Cody Leck, and I'd just like to comment upon hearing these last couple of comments, and I just want to start off and say I appreciate all the attention and time and effort that Lake County has put into the ordinances and trying to overtake and take on this giant industry that is emerging and trying to figure out that legal pathway for all of operators. But I would also like to comment just on the one part of, you know, as a legal operator here in Lake County, you know, we've done everything that the county has asked as far as, you know, when the rules have changed, we've had our consultants and everyone on top of all these ordinances, giving you guys all the information that we possibly can, and here we are, you know, into our second, third year, and us not being able to get early activated, activated has essentially shut down our businesses, because we are trying to be legal operators, where there's tons of people around us and around our farm that we know are illegal operators, and it's just a really hard pill to swallow to see all these guys making money, continue to operate, while we're trying to play by the rules and be legal tax-paying businesses, raising our families in the county, providing to the general tax fund to improve our county and the well-being of the county, and here we are stuck in this logjam that is, you know, the early activation process. We were without a planner for over four months, and here we are just about to lose our business because we can't afford to carry our property with all these absorbent overhead costs without being able to operate. And I would just like to bring that to the board's attention, that there are a lot of operators, and a lot of them are probably afraid to talk and speak to this issue, but there are a lot of operators that have been trying for years to get their processes and their licensing through that are still abiding by your rules and not growing and operating, and it's just really tough to sit back and watch all these illegal farmers sitting here making money hand over fist while we're struggling to do the right thing. And again, I'd just like to thank you guys for your time and allowing us to speak on this issue, and I appreciate everything that you guys are trying to do in a positive manner to help our industry. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we will go ahead and close public comment. Ms. Grant, I would like to work with you on the, bringing back that ordinance so that the board can go ahead and review that and, and kind of restart that conversation, and whether it's as simple as just resurrection and we come back to, and start the discussion from there, or if there needs to be more, I'd love to work with you on that. I think that I heard some very passionate conversation about, yes, we need to do something about this. I will reach out to state and federal representatives and see what can be done further than what we've already been doing. I, I know, again, I've mentioned it earlier, and I'll mention it again, the work that is being done by the current task force, especially in the North Shore, has proven to have some results, and I know that we just hurt almost more than 100,000 plants so far, and I think that unfortunately, that's just a drop in the bucket, and we need to see a whole lot more than that to really make the impact that I'm hoping that we can make. So between that, the continuation of the conversation with Yolo County Flood Control at the Two by Two, which will continue our efforts to make sure that we are appropriately permitting those who are accessing our lake water, and the Ag Advisory Committee taking on the water sustainability conversation, I think that is where we'll leave off and we'll continue the illegal cannabis cultivation conversation when it comes back to our board, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. Perfect.
One last comment, you know, on the last public comment speaker was, you know, since we have the ordinance in place, those are the type of business owners in the cannabis industry that we want to be able to support. You know, they tried to do the right thing, we're still having obviously some issues with early activation and stuff, but those are the ones we want to help come out of the other end of this and be that business in Lake County operating cannabis for us. So I know the struggles are out there, it's a new industry, so we're trying to work through that in all departments here at the county as we establish this industry, but, you know, a prime example, that would be an individual or a business that would say, all right, hey, you tried to do the right thing, I understand you couldn't get early activation, so you're out this year, but next year there's a path forward for you, and you're, you know what I mean? So those are the ones I want to be able to help, the ones that really wanted to step up and do the right thing under our ordinance.
Thank you. Any further comments before we move on, or at least looking for consensus that that is what everyone is looking for on what I just said?
Yes, for me.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I don't want to get into the weeds, and I just agree, because there's also a lot of other, like fences and CC and ours, those are too far into the weeds of that ordinance that we can get into later, but I really think this is a good approach.
Right, and, and I appreciate the, sorry for exhausting conversation, but I think this is an important subject matter that I think people have been hoping that we would solve sooner than this. I think that the drought is the opportunity to really take it seriously, that if we ignore it, it's only gonna hurt us that much more than it has been. So I appreciate it, and I look forward to further discussion that we bring some of these things back to the board. So let's go ahead and finish that item up, and that was the entirety of our open session for today. Thank you very much for joining us, and we will be going into closed session for three items. Eight point one is conference with labor negotiator, Chief Negotiator Margaret Long, County Negotiators Carol Hutchinson and Pam Samick, and B, employee organizations, LCDDA, A, LCDSA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCSSE, and LCSMA. Eight point two, conference with A, temporary representatives designated to meet with county department heads regarding salary and benefits, and B, unrepresented management employees. Eight point three, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, City of Clear Lake versus County of Lake Ita. And with that, we will adjourn to our own offices in order to join Zoom, as there will be some shared material, and it's a little bit more difficult to do that here, in order to join our closed session.